Bit in much detail and so we wanted to provide some additional guidance that we have from the discussions that we had and then really make sure that there was enough time for discussion here. Again, there's never going to be enough resources to fill the needs of our community. And as we move forward, we're going to need as much flexibility around these funds as possible. And so keep an eye towards that as you hear this presentation, but those will be the common themes around needing that flexibility because we don't know what we don't know. And as the situation rapidly evolves, we're going to need to ensure that we have that room to maneuver some of these funding sources in the future depending on how our community responds to this pandemic. So with that, I'll turn it to our Deputy Chief Financial Officer at Vanino.
Thank you, City Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor Mayor Perren and Council members. Ed Vanino, Deputy Chief Financial Officer. I do want to say again that we, I emailed this presentation and the proposed spending framework to you at 1:15 today. We also distributed this spending framework yesterday, so you've had it for about 24 hours. We do apologize for not being able to get you these materials sooner, but we are all working, you know, as fast as we possibly can on this important subject. And so, you know, we're making changes to this presentation right up until about 1:00 today. I do understand the time constraints, so I'll try to be brief in my comments and ask all of the speakers behind me to likewise err on the side of brevity. Let me share my screen with you so you can, we can have the presentation up. Is everyone able to see that? Not yet?
Not yet.
There it is.
All right.
Coming on.
So the agenda for today, I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about how we reorganized our spending framework. I know there is some confusion about how we presented it previously. We got a lot of great feedback at the May 19 work session. We also got feedback from our COVID-19 fiscal health cabinet. So we tried to reorganize it based upon that feedback. I would just stress it's a reorganization. We are not changing the priorities from what you saw on May 19th. We're just trying to present the information that maybe makes it a little bit more clear what, what dollars are going into each of the buckets. I will spend just one slide to talk about the portion of the framework for the emergency response spending. And then we will turn it over to Stephanie Hayden to walk us through the public health and medical portion of the framework. And then the economic recovery is a little bit more of a broad basket category. And so there's going to be several speakers that are going to help move us through the spending framework. Again, we'll try to get through it quickly so that we can get to your comments and discussions, but I think some of your questions may be things we can answer just by getting through this presentation. So in regard to the reorganization, just to reiterate, we're, changes how we organize the framework, but we're not changing our funding priorities. Again, I sent that, I sent that spreadsheet to you, that table that lays this out in more detail. I could bring that up in the screen as well if it helps facilitate your conversation, but essentially the bottom four bullets here summarizes the changes we have made to the framework. First, we split the funding for councils named initiatives into their program components. So for example, the RISE program, which council approved for $15 million, had funding in it related to financial and direct economic support, food assistance, as well as rental assistance. If you look at the framework now, you will see the RISE program reflected in those three different buckets. We added a column to the framework for funding notes and can make it easier for you to identify which of these different program areas have funding from the RISE program, from Archer, from Clear, et cetera. So that was one rearrangement of the framework. Hopefully that makes it easier for you to see what staff's recommended priorities are. Second, we talked about this last time, we weren't in a position, last time we presented the framework, we didn't have enough information to put a dollar amount out for the Austin Conservation Corps. We've now included $2 million in the framework for workforce development programs, specifically the Austin Conservation Corps. And then we think that will be a combination of existing department budgets and perhaps some funding from the Coronavirus Relief Fund as well. But there is a lot of funding throughout the city's budget and there's a lot of interest from departments to, to participate in this program and this approach to delivering city services. Next, we reclassified and really just moving it around. Some of these categories overlap, but we took 2.3 million that had been in the testing category on the May 19 framework. We put that into the protection of vulnerable populations category because it was testing specific to nursing homes. And so we, we heard that there was an interest in seeing the, the dollars we're spending to protect vulnerable populations all in one place. And so that's why we moved that 2.3 million. Again, it's not a change in the purpose or the priorities, it's just a change in how we're categorizing it so we could fully reflect the, the amount of money in that area. And then finally, we had some questions last time about our thought process behind the contingency funds. Our contingency amount, you know, that amount we were recommending that we hold back for uncertainties is about 12%, but really our thinking on that contingency was we felt it was primarily needed to address public health and medical needs if the disease, if there's a resurgence in the number of cases, if we end up seeing our hospitals overwhelmed. There's just so much uncertainty. And so we think that's one of the really, really important areas that we need to be reserving some funds to address should it come. And then the second area that we're recommending some contingency for is in the, in the area of emergency response, because there's a lot of uncertainty in regards to how department operations are changing and additional funds that may be needed to help offset department operating expenses and to fund critical emergency response programs. So I'm going to just move on real quick then. That emergency response category, it's just kind of our, our shortest category, there's really only three program buckets, overall 105.5 million dollars. And maybe just a quick reminder that we're talking about in total around $270 million of funding as part of, as the city's response, the funding we have to respond to the COVID-19 crisis. And we're looking at that around emergency response, medical and public health needs, and then economic support for our businesses and individuals who are suffering as a result of the economic consequences of COVID-19. The sources of funding are FEMA dollars and then federal monies that are coming through to us through the CARES Act, as well as the city's reserves and some portion of our existing operating budget. So kind of the sources and broad uses of funding, but in that emergency response category, 105.5 million, 30 million of it is our estimated amount that would be a FEMA reimbursement related to our direct emergency management. Think about this as the Emergency Operations Center, overtime hours that are being worked by various staff throughout the city and our effort to combat the spread of the disease. That, that's what the emergency management category is. And we do envision that being largely reimbursed through FEMA. The next bullet, $68 million is to offset department operating expenses that are substantially dedicated to COVID-19. We would anticipate a lot of this being in our emergency medical services, fire department and public health departments, but they have substantially changed how they're operate, operating and the programs they're delivering to serve the community. And these expenses are eligible for reimbursement through the Coronavirus Relief Fund. And then finally, $7.5 million we're recommending to kind of hold in reserves for unknowns and uncertainties, $7.5 million is what we're recommending for a contingency amount in this category. I'm going to quickly transition it over to Stephanie Hayden and ask her if she could walk us through the medical and public health summary.
We have, what the department has done is we put together a plan that will carry us from the month of May through the end of December. And this page has our high level overview, as you can see, based upon all of the areas where we need staffing, case investigation, contact tracing, public information, language access, testing, shelter services, and contract management, just to name a few. We are collaborating with the Human Resources Department just to determine if there are other temporary staff across the city that may be able to transition into these roles, as well as determining if there are other city staff that can transition into this role. We want to make sure that we get staff that will be able to be reassigned until the end of the year as we have done the planning for the end of the year. The next bucket has the commodities, the contractuals and commodities. And so as you can see, that's where most of our testing is happening, but it's also where our shelters and quarantine facilities are. And so about three fourths of the recommendation is focused on our epidemiology response, our testing, our sheltering and support for vulnerable populations. And as Ed spoke to earlier, the 25 million for public health contingency would basically would overlay. And so Ed, if you could move to the next slide. So as you can see, we put together the budget recommendations by expenditure category. So if you look at the expenditure category, this is what we plan through the end of the year. In the event, we have the, the surges that, you know, according to the modeling that we've seen, a couple of different ones, we can surge up in the months of June, July, but we can also prepare for the winter months as we move into flu season. And so we would add the additional funding across these categories to ensure that we are able to scale up our operations and it be a seamless process. Next slide, Ed. So this provides you a breakdown from the, from the previous slide and gives you the information for each of the buckets. So one of the things that we did plan for, just in case we may need them, currently we have four protective lodging facilities. And, and it has to provide, you know, kind of the spectrum of everything you need to be in those spaces. And so we have budgeted in the event that we need to add another one to have five that will take us through the end of the year. It's important for us to budget for behavioral health services at those lodges because we know that our vulnerable population will need those supportive services. And as you can see, we put our, our budget in for testing. And so you see, we've asked for 80,000 test kits, which includes our lab processing. And I know some of you may have seen the plan that we submitted last week that we provided to, to your offices, but it was a federal requirement. So we provided it to the Federal Health and Human Services as well as the, we sent a copy of it to our, the state, the Texas Department of State Health Services. Now, within that plan, we have, we have planned out that we would start to increase our level of testing. So in July, you can see we would be at 60,000 tests. And I know you're asking and thinking, hmm, you put 80,000 test kits on here. What we are anticipating is, is we've already put an order into the state to receive 2,000 tests per, 2,000 tests per week, test kits per week. We are also anticipating that more partners will come online. As most of you have known, there are five CBS locations throughout the city of Austin and Travis County that are providing these services. And so we are anticipating that there are going to be more partners that are going to come into this space. The other thing, we, we are moving to do more mobile testing. We've done some, just a small level of mobile testing. And so we are in contracts, in, in conversations with a vendor that will be able to provide some mobile testing for us. And so we are going to do a similar model of how we do for HIV testing, where we take testing to the community and be able to do testing in zip codes where we see that there is a high number of individuals that are positive in those neighborhoods. We've had requests from faith-based institutions that would like for us to do some testing there as well. So we are, are going to refine that plan and develop that and roll that out as well. So we are really looking at how we can reach the most vulnerable populations in this space and provide that service. And as you can see, Ed mentioned this in his highlights with the $3 million for the nursing homes. But we also don't want to lose sight of the planning and research that we have, that we will be working with UT Dale on these two studies. Next slide, Ed. This provides an overview of the vulnerable populations, our medical equipment, which is our PPE, and other areas that we feel are important. So for example, we know it's going to be important for us to bring on some temporary contract management staff. With all of these contracts that we have with, with the RISE and any other contracts that may come available, we're going to have to have staff to be able to keep up with the process of getting the money out to the vendors and working very closely with them. In addition to that, we have, we are going to put together a, induce more target media. And we are looking at our materials and, and we've included money for translation and interpretation. But we've also have thus far been using some portable toilets and hand washing stations for our homeless community. And that concludes my slides. Thank you, Ed.
All right, I think we're going to have, Veronica is going to tee up this next area, economic support.
Good afternoon, Council. Veronica Bressenio, Chief Economic Recovery Officer for the city. I will transition us into the discussion of economic support. As Ed has mentioned, it is a broad discussion on how we're approaching support. And so the next series of slides will be presented to you by Directors Rosie Trulove, Stephanie Hayden, and Sinovia Holtrod. The work that we've been done has been under the advisement of our Chief Equity Officer, Brian Oaks, as well as Bree Franco and Ed himself. I wanted to state before we get started, we started this process by having the priority to fight the pandemic. And in doing that, we consulted Austin Public Health first and foremost, and Stephanie has walked us through how we suggest we allocate these, or recommend that we allocate these funds towards fighting the pandemic. And once that was discussed, then we started looking at the additional priorities, knowing that we don't have all the funds that we need to address all the need and knowing that the need is great in our community. We've worked together as a team to propose a plan that recommends the use of these funds in a way towards economic support. And it's doing it from both the individual perspective as well as the organization perspective, whether that organization is a business or a nonprofit or another type of entity. We also, as we put our recommendations together, we based it on data, looking at the data that we do have available with the programs that we are working on right now, new programs that we're working on right now in this space. And that's done across the board and across our departments, health, housing, and economic development. So before I turn it over to the directors to go into the details of each of these bullets, and you see a slide with multiple bullets of how we're recommending the use of funds, I've asked John Hockenius, who's our consultant in the matter of economic recovery, to talk a little bit about the lay of the land and kind of set the stage for us. And from there, we'll go to Rosie Trulove. John, do you mind taking over?
Of course. Mayor, Council, thanks very much for having me. Once again, interesting times, right? And so I, in the interest of being fairly concise and being fairly brief, I will tell you kind of how we are looking at this and thinking about how it applies to the effort here today to begin the sort organizing the framework around how we're going to make funds available to support the community. The first phase I think we have sort of gone through or in the process of going through is what I would think of as kind of the initial round of identification and stabilization. It is playing out largely as we thought it would. Perhaps you all recall when we talked almost a couple of months ago, we said that it was likely that somewhere on the order of one in four Austinites might experience a period of joblessness. As we sit here right now, the official unemployment rate for the city of Austin as of April is a little over 12%. But in conversations with Tamara Atkinson and with Rosie and Veronica as well, we all kind of agreed that for every person who's in the system, there's another person right now who's not in the system. And so without getting down into the weeds too much, I think we are on track to see likely something on the order of one in four, hopefully a little better than that, but around one in four of us might experience a period of joblessness. We are experiencing that period of joblessness right now with an unprecedented level of federal financial support. I mean, we are all familiar with the Paycheck Protection Program, which has helped a number of businesses. We are all familiar with the economic stimulus, which is of course direct payments to households. We're also familiar with, you know, the federal supplement, if you will, to unemployment insurance that is providing folks 600 bucks a week extra over and above what Texas provides if they filed for unemployment, and that's going to go through the end of July. So in this kind of first phase, we've seen the effects we anticipated, in particular on the economy side, we've seen a lot of the impacts in what economists call consumer-facing or B to C. You know, they're talking about your lodging industry, your hospitality industry, to some degree, your personal services industries. Those effects we're seeing, and we're seeing at least some level, a pretty substantial support coming from the feds. It's phase one. The next phase I think is going to happen as one, that federal financial support may run out. You know, we were talking about unemployment supplements being done at the end of July. There is lots of back and forth conversation about whether and in what form that will be extended at the federal level. Let's assume for sake of argument, it will probably not be as extensive and widespread as the first round was. And that's also going to coincide when the second round of knock-on economic effects begin to hold, and that's the B to B stuff. You may have seen, for example, today, American Airlines announced it's going to have about 30% layoffs and voluntary retirements for its administrative staff. That's a fairly big number of people. What are they going to do when it comes time to do an upgrade on the software system at American Airlines? They're logically going to delay it for a while. That has an effect on the company that has that contract. What's going to happen to commercial real estate here in Austin and elsewhere as people are saying, hey, man, I got to renew my lease on that office building, but I don't need as much space, or I sure as heck aren't going to pay as much as I was before. What are the implications of that? So that's the kind of the B to B, the next phase that's coming, and that will come in about the same time we'll begin to see that as this federal support is at least shifted and likely diminished. And then the final phase is, okay, once we've assimilated all that, how do we integrate our efforts to try to recover from that in terms of the economy as we've also tried to help our most vulnerable populations navigate on through all of this? And so a lot of this in the spirit is, is in the spirit of seeing it in this kind of progression going from initial shock, stabilization, secondary effects, and then recovery. And we are trying to think about how we tee us up with the limited resources we have to deal with all three of those different phases of the process.
So I think that's, thank you, John. I think that's bringing it to me. This is Rosie. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So our recommendation for, for rental assistance is 23.8 million, and that will be for what we're going to call phase two of our Relief of Emergency Needs for Tenants Program. Payment will be directly to, of rent will be directly to landlords, and we're still looking at households under 80% of the median family impact, income who have been impacted by COVID-19. And you see those, those MFI levels on the screen for folks that, that might want to see that. Next slide, please, Ed. So to refresh folks' memory, the first round of rent was rolled out at the beginning of the month of May, and it was for about $1.2 million of assistance. This was administered, it was funded with the Housing Trust Fund and administered by the Housing Authority of the City of Austin in partnership with the city. We did a lottery process on May 4th through 6th. And eligibility, you must, you needed to have been a city of Austin resident, had a standard lease, were at 80% and below median family income. You had to demonstrate an impact by COVID-19. The tenant was still expected to pay 30% of their income towards their rent. And the landlord had to be, the landlord had to agree to payment of either the, the rent that was in the contract or, or fair market rent, whichever was the lesser. And this was for one month of rental assistance. So the results of the, the program that we have so far, and I'm actually going to give numbers that are updated from even yesterday, when we talk about these numbers being updated and, and changing on a daily basis, I've gotten two updates from HACA just today on the most recent numbers. So we had 10,000 plus applications that were received, over 5,500 that were eligible and complete. We have, as of noon today, we have processed the applications for 1,549 applications, resulting in $1,175,673 in rental assistance going out with, again, a $759 average assistance per household. That leaves us about a, a little more than, a little less than $84,000 to go, which we think is going to serve approximately 110 more applicants. What we found with, with this particular program is that many folks had already, that folks had already paid their May rent. So if you want to go to the next slide, Ed. And so we rolled the assistance forward to June for some of the applicants. We found that this was, we went with partnering with HACA because of, they were uniquely positioned with capacity and technology to be able to handle a program like this. But what we found is that we were challenged by the administratively intense aspect of this program and being in a remote work environment and an intensive amount of case management. We had call center staffing, there was an intense amount of follow-up documentation and communications with landlords and tenants. So we are going to be recommending some changes between what we did with, with the prior program and what we would call Rent 2.0. As I said, some of the applicants had paid May rent, and so we were rolling this forward to June. The majority of applicants were small households, and we did have some challenges with getting folks to accept that landlord certification about lesser of the fair market rent or the actual rent and, and including the payment from the, the actual tenants. Now, the trends, both locally and nationally for, for May rent collections were down approximately 10%. We were right in line with what we were seeing across the country. But we do anticipate increased rental assistant needs coming in, in the coming months, especially as unemployment insurance, the, the expanded unemployment insurance related to COVID is, is going to be anticipating to run out at the end of July. So we look to national best practice and what we see is a desire to leverage existing programs with adaptive capacity to maximize flexibility, to focus on populations with the greatest unmet need and, and to manage current resources while still pushing for, for more funding. And that's kind of pointed up at the national level there. We also look to our statewide collaborators. Right now, Houston, San Antonio, and Austin are the only ones who have put on such large-scale rental assistance programs, and we are learning from, all three of us are learning from each other as we, as we figure out how to, how to take this forward into the next iteration. In the instance of, of time, I won't go into the details of those programs, but I can certainly answer some questions about those if they're, if they exist from Council. When we're looking at the modifications for rent, we're still very much in listening mode and want to get feedback from members of the community and from Council. from members of the community and from council. But we are wanting to consider a decentralized intake process where we look at partnering with three to five different nonprofits that will help us with outreach and eligibility and help us ensure that we're meeting our equity goals. We want to continue to come up with a deadline. We're considering having first come, first served versus a lottery. But I think the lottery, in a lot of instances, makes more sense. So, if we can figure out logistically and administratively how to swing that, that is going to be our preference. For folks that are applying that are at 80% MFI or up to 80% MFI, we're looking at one month of assistance. If folks come in and apply and they're, and they were already existing up to 30% MFI, then we are looking to qualify them at, with one application for three months of assistance. We're wanting payment to be the actual rent, not fair market rent or some subset of rent that makes it easier in the, it simplifies the process for how we're going to achieve getting the dollars out the door. And it also helps the landlords. We're also looking to partner with agencies that will help us bring in landlords that can help facilitate applications for their folks that may be low-income and impacted by COVID. We do recognize that there is an increased desire for us to work on a program that will help meet the needs of landlords that may have been ghosted or have tenants that are just flat out not paying rent and not being communicative. I'm not sure this is the program that meets those needs, but we are looking to continue to work on that. I have a call that's getting set up with folks in the community, including the Apartment Association and ABOR, to discuss that and what that kind of, what kind of program that might need to look like. But we do recommend for this, for rent, for the program Rent, that HACA would remain our fiscal agent. And that is the end of my presentation. I think we'll turn it over. I'm assuming, Ed, that you will want to do questions at the end. And so, let folks go through the whole presentation.
By way of time check, it is, what, 2:20 now? You're about halfway through the packet, so you need to pick it up.
Yes, sir. Delvey, are you on the line?
Yes, thank you, Ed. Solnevi Ho, Rab with Economic Development, next slide. We are, thank you, Council, for your approval of the resolution in May. We are seeking $25.5 million to support small businesses through two phases. The first phase through the Clear Fund of a grant up to 40,000. This is in line with what Travis County is doing, around 40. And Williamson County is doing around 25,000 for grants for small businesses. You can see the profile of our small businesses in Austin. I won't go into that detail. In addition to the 23.5 million, we're seeking 2 million in long-term lease stabilization fund, a grant up to 40,000 for landlords who will enter into long-term leases with commercial tenants to deliver community benefits. Next slide, Ed. In addition, Council has also approved utility bill assistance of $10 million. Next slide. We know that our creative sector is an economic engine in Austin. Council has already approved $1.5 million for a music disaster relief fund, for a $1,000 grant for musicians. We anticipate serving about 1,500 musicians. In addition, you approved a creative space disaster fund of $1 million to provide grants up to 50,000 for organizations, venues, and independent artists. We are seeking an additional $5 million for the creative sector. We have already approved $1 million for nonprofits focused on artists and culture. We're seeking an additional recommendation of $5 million to continue that support. Next slide, Ed. Finally, the Anchor Fund, which was also approved. We are proposing two phases for a total of $7 million. Council articulated specific nonprofits that we are to focus on. The second phase will actually extend to nonprofits that may not fall in those categories. You can see the profile of nonprofits in Austin is over 4,400, employing about 21,000 individuals. Next slide, Ed. Childcare was also approved by Council, seeking those facilities that are two-star or above. You've already approved $1 million, and we're seeking an additional $1 million. Next slide, Ed. Technical assistance. We're providing grants, and we have already initiated a long program, but we want to also provide technical assistance to small businesses that can help them in capacity building, disaster recovery, and resilience, and nonprofit management. And so, this will be offered not only to the small businesses, but the nonprofits. Next slide. I will let Stephanie address this slide.
I think actually the next three slides will be done by Stephanie, and then we'll be wrapping up in just a few more minutes.
Just a high level, this is just providing the financial support for individuals. So, whether it's to RISE or a fund similar to the Public Health Fund, which impacts vulnerable populations. Next slide, Ed. This is the food assistance caregiver meals for the district as well as Dale Valley and almost population. Next slide, Ed. This just basically provides PPE grants as well as our medical assistance program, which will cover additional behavioral health counseling and assistance for low-to-moderate income workers with healthcare and customer-facing roles, customer service roles. That's it.
So, Mayor and Council, I will just close this out with workforce development. Deputy City Manager Rivera Vandermine has been taking the lead on this and working closely with a lot of our departments. I can tell you, this is one of the programs that people are really excited about. We've had a lot of departments expressing interest in participating in this program and using existing budgets, things like conservancy projects and water utility and watershed protection and parks and wildfire fuel mitigation and Austin Fire Department and various other programs. Lots of opportunities, we believe, within existing city resources to fund the workforce development, Austin Conservation Corps program. This is just a summary slide of everything we said, and we are all here as staff to support you through this process and answer any questions you have.
Okay. Colleagues, Mayor Protem Garza.
Can you put it on that last slide, Ed, the summary slide?
Yes, I can.
And I have a lot of other questions, but because I know, I'm sure everybody does, and I have limited time, I guess my main priority is, well, a couple of points I want to make is one, and the comment that Mr. Hockenios made, which we all knew, and I'm glad he pointed that out, that while we see an official 12% unemployment rate, the reality is there is a large, hidden, so to speak, population in our community that would not be eligible for unemployment benefits. So, they are not reported in that. And so, that, you know, to hear that number that it could be doubled at, we're at almost 25% of unemployment. I'm really grateful for what, the money that was committed to RISE. And I know that we were committing more to rental and those programs, but I just want to point out that there is no additional money in this framework for other needs aside from rental and food. And, you know, some families use that, and the nonprofits could tell us what those anecdotal stories are. A couple of them have asked for more funding and have, you know, there's limited funding, so they haven't gotten it. They were able to create a system to get that money out, and there's not any more for them. And so, if we're, I just, not having any additional allocation to families who are, could be up to 25% of Austinites facing dire situation right now, and we have no additional allocation for basic needs and direct financial assistance. So, I don't know where we move or how we get them, but I just, I think it's really important that, at the end of the day, our very first priority should be prioritizing vulnerable populations that do not have access to any help, will not get stimulus money, and that kind of thing. And this framework, and I appreciate all the hard work that staff has done, and I know you're being pulled in 5 million different directions. But I just, the most vulnerable, we see no additional allocation for needs beyond food and rental. And I hope that we can find somehow to get some additional funds to the nonprofits that have told us that the need was so great, and they've had to turn so many families away. And then aside, and I guess my only question would be specifically to the nonprofit assistance. Can you go back to that slide that, I'm trying to understand exactly? Let's see here. Are those grants I saw? Can someone explain those grants for the nonprofits? I know they absolutely need help. I'm just wondering if there's a way to help both, to help a nonprofit and to help them and to give them a contract and some funding to be able to allocate to families as well?
Solnevi Ho, Rab with Economic Development. This was an item that was approved May 7th to provide operational support for nonprofits in these specific spaces of health and human services. So, that was the intent. And we could possibly look at how to do both, but the resolution I see talked about support.
Was it support for the, for the, 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 the RISE funding?
No, the organization as a business.
Okay. Did not help, you know, would it not help that, couldn't, could we do both? Could we not help them? Because, you know, I guess the situation is they've lost funding from donors, from their, you know, regular donor base. And having a contract with the city is, it would be essentially an additional donor, so to speak, in that, you know, they're contracted to provide some kind of service, but they get an administrative, excuse me, administrative fee from that. Is there an opportunity there to? And I think you said you could look into that, so I appreciate that. And then, is there a, was, did the resolution, I don't remember, I'm sorry, exactly. Did it specifically prioritize what kinds of nonprofits? Or like, as far as the service they provide? Or was it just any nonprofit that applies for the grant?
The nonprofits that service the specific deals. So, if you're a nonprofit working in the education, arts and culture, or health and human services.
Okay, and then, I'll just, I'll go ahead and hand it off, and hopefully, I think y'all might still be meeting when I'm done with my thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, because we're concerned.
Some of my thoughts are similar to Mayor Protem's. I want to mention one thing as far as the updated spending framework. The new first line that says financial and other direct support, now at 15 million, seven and a half from RISE, and I guess the other eight or so from, the other eight or so is in addition. After talking with the Budget Office, that 8 million is the public health funds to make it so that if somebody is sick, we want to need to keep them home, or somebody is older and we need to keep them home, that they stay home. And so, my recommendation is that that, frankly, that, I think that people can misunderstand, since this is economic support or economic recovery dollars, misunderstand what that fund is. So, my sense is that really, that should be broken out and be in the public health section, because this isn't funding that just any person with an economic issue can apply for. It's really funding with a public health purpose. So, my recommendation is that that money live where I think the public would understand it better. So, that's just one thought. Because here, it's mixed, in this column, it's mixed in with things like HEB gift cards to people who can't afford food. And those things are just, to me, categorically different. So, that's one thing that I wanted to note. And then, the second piece is to echo what the Mayor Protem just mentioned around. I appreciate the significant amounts of new rental assistance. I appreciate all of this. Actually, let me start out by saying, I think we all recognize that what the manager is trying to do here and what we're all working on is a balance. It is not, we are never going to be able to have enough money for any given need. So, the question is, what is the proportionate balance that we strike? And given the amount of federal support in some areas, but lack of federal support in other areas, I really think that for me, we fall, I fall towards allocating money to public health and emergency needs, and then allocating money where we see the greatest need, especially the greatest need for people that don't have other access to funds. And that's why I think rental assistance and direct financial assistance through RISE are where I would strike the balance a little bit more in that direction. So, I'll just say, it's really transparently, and it's hard to say where to cut or where to reduce the increase. But I would fall more on the side of more rental assistance, more direct financial assistance, since there isn't any increase there. And if I would have to reduce some, then I would find, look to see if there's any reductions on the business side that we can do, especially if we find out who qualifies more for certain business support from the federal government. I know that there's some folks that really can't get that support. But if I were to reduce some, I would reduce it there. I would find, as Mayor Protem maybe alluded to, ways for us to support our nonprofit sector by asking them to provide services to people and maybe reduce the amount of just business support there. And I would look at, on the creatives, on the additional 5 million in creative money. I have a lot of creatives in my district and, you know, across the city, that need support. But we don't have a fund specifically for construction workers. We don't have a fund specifically for housekeepers. You know, we want to create these rental assistance buckets and financial assistance buckets for any person in any industry that is not getting the help they need. And so, I do think that if we moved some of that creative money over to direct financial assistance, that would not be cutting creatives out. It would still be a place for creatives to go. But also, you know, if you're putting up lights at a show, or if you're an actor or a musician in a show, or if you're the childcare worker for, in a household with a creative, you could all still apply to that same fund. And so, that, if I needed to put my cards on the table about where I would, what I would move around to create more rental assistance and direct financial assistance, I would look to those places, because almost everything else is ultimately a public health expense or an emergency response expense.
Okay. You can return us to the screen where we could see one another. That might be helpful. I can only see four people. Jimmy?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm just really appreciative of staff's work on this. I think the reframing of this really streamlined and simplified how to interpret this. And, you know, we're going to have a challenging conversation as a council to figure out kind of to what Councilmember Kassar was talking about. You know, do we want to make any tweaks in these categories? But as far as the framework is concerned, I think you've done a good job structuring this document. So, I just wanted to thank staff for that. When I, when I look at some of the numbers and I add up the direct financial assistance, the rental assistance, the food assistance, and the utility assistance, we get to 56, 57 million, which is good, because that's kind of in the ballpark where we've been hearing some community members talk about the scale of individual assistance. And so, we are, I think, squarely in that ballpark, which is exciting to see. You know, there'll be debate about how they break out in those categories. That's a good debate. The place where I can kind of get on board with what you're saying, Councilmember Kassar, is the timing and rollout of funds. So, if we have the 20-something million for small business, but it's going to take three months to roll it out, but the 20, wait, the 41 million in rent and direct financial assistance only lasts a month or a month and a half, then maybe there is some room to move stuff back over into the place where there's going to be more immediate help while we flesh out the scale of business support getting past that initial 10 million that we authorized with that in '23. So, I think there is some, some re- So I think there is some, some reasonable flexibility there that are, that is as much a pragmatic implication as it is one that's, uh, policy related. But, but again, good work to staff on, on how you structure this. I think it's a great framework.
Councilmember Kitchen?
I have some just questions and comments. So, um, one of my questions is, um, how does this relate to money we already had in the existing budget? And, um, let me give you two examples. So for example, under the creative bucket, we list the one million for the, for the creative space program. Well, we already had 750,000 in our existing budget. So this one million reflects some money that we, that we, that we allocated last year in our budget, as well as some COVID funds. But, uh, but it looks to me like we're counting it all as out of COVID funds. So I would want to have some understanding, you know, about, about that. And the only reason, the only, I just give that as an illustration because I don't know if that's the case for any of these other buckets. Um, and my question really is, if, if we are doing that, if we have some, in some of these buckets, existing budget dollars from the last budget that we approved, does that not mean that we actually have a, an additional, additional dollar amounts to play with? So that's a question. And then a related question, and then I'll stop so you guys can speak to it. A related question has to do with our homeless individuals. So we don't have a bucket in here for our homeless individuals to get housing. We don't talk about rental assistance for our homeless individuals, and they're among our, I mean, they're, they're, that's what we're trying to prevent is homelessness. But we did have in our budget for this last year, permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing funds. So I hope I'm correct in making the assumption that those, that those bucket of dollars, those rapid rehousing dollars and permanent supportive housing dollars that we approved in last year's budget are being spent now to help the homeless individuals find more permanent housing so that when they, so that their path after the pro-lodge, their path is into housing, not back on the streets. So, so to wrap all that up, my fundamental question there is, how does this bucket of money relate to what we alloc, what we approved in our budgets last year? Is it double counting in some way or not? And then second, second, getting to the homeless, are we using the dollars that we allocated last year for homeless individuals around the rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing to help them get housing, rather than going from a pro-lodge situation back into shelter or onto the streets? So that's kind of two questions.
So Councilmember Kitchen, I will take the first question around the Austin Creative Space Relief Program. You are correct, we originally had 750,000 dollars in that program, but we amended the guidelines to incorporate COVID-related challenges or criteria. And so that is why it's included in the sheet, but you're correct, it was in our budget. And I believe that's probably the only item, and I'll defer to Ed. But we amended the guidelines to factor into the COVID.
Yes, and thank you. I don't mean to imply that it shouldn't be on this list. My question is, so what is the other 750,000 being used for? I mean, it's, I, I guess what I'm asking, I, I, I'm not understanding how this all adds up, and maybe Ed can help me with it. Does that, and if I'm just being, if, if, if everybody else understands it, I can take it offline. But I'm not understanding why that doesn't mean we have an additional 750,000 to put somewhere.
No, the 750 is from our operating budget.
Right, right. And it was dedicated towards, and it was to be used CSAT program. So if we think we're gonna, Ed, do you understand my question? Perhaps you can answer?
I, I do, and I, and I was not aware of that. So if you look at the third page of the spending framework, I think the one example that we tried to capture that way was the Workforce Development Program, where we put $2 million towards that program. And we anticipate most, if not all of that, can be funded through existing department budgets. And so we use that term operating funds. That, that sounds like, from what I just heard Senovia say, that use of the term operating funds should have also been added to the creative sector assistance, because 750,000 of that sounds like it's coming from existing operating budgets. Um, those would be the only two years ago that I think are like that.
So my question is, does that add to the, 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 the total spending framework estimate is 271 million? So do we need to put in 750,000 to that total?
I think that's already, uh, the 750 is part of the 8.5 million.
But, but I don't understand how we're accounting for, and again, if, I don't want to take people's time if everybody understands this, but I don't understand how we're accounting for what's already in our budget.
So those are, those two, I think those are the only two examples I'm now aware of. Creative sector assistance and workforce development, where we have some existing approved budget, budget council approved for fiscal year 20. We have some of that money going to those two programs. Everything else is new funding from the CARES Act or FEMA reimbursements or from our general fund reserves.
Okay, well then my question, and you can think about it, and I can explain it offline, but why is the 271.6 million not then? I assume the 2 million is in that. So why are we not doing 271.6 million plus 750,000? That's what I'm not understanding. Again, I can take it offline. But you, but you see, the, the question I'm asking is, if we, we have that 750,000, so, or maybe the, the other way to look at it is, this, this, these two buckets are being funded by a combination of CARES relief, other federal funds, FEMA, and our existing budget. Is that the way we're supposed to be looking at this?
Only, and, and for that last part, with our existing budget, only 750,000 dollars for the creative sector assistance. And I would anticipate somewhere in the, in the range of a million and a half or so for the workforce development program. We're still working through the details of that program. But as I said earlier, there's a lot of interest from departments about participating in that program. There's funding in the budget that can go towards that program. So only for those two line items in the framework.
Okay, well then I just. Pardon? I'm sorry.
Both of those amounts would be part of the total. The 270 point, 271.6 million.
Okay.
I mean, that Senovia just talked about, as well as the reallocation of, of existing department funds to the workforce development program.
Okay, well then I have a broader question that we don't have to go into here. But I, I'm, I'm still, I'm not understanding how we came up with the total that we've got available to spend, I guess is what I'm saying. So, uh, we have a 271.6 million here. Where did that come from and how do we, where's that total? So we can take that offline, but that's my, that's a fundamental, uh, question that I have here, because that's what tells me, you know, we, we, we know, we, everyone is saying that we don't have enough money to cover the needs. Well, don't have enough money, what it, what's the component of, of the money that we have? In other words, what are we adding up to understand the money that we have? So that's a fundamental question. So, um, so let me turn to the other one and, and then.
So, um, Councilmember Kitchen, I, I would like to address, uh, your question about the homeless.
Yes, if you could address that, thank you.
Okay, um, so, so we are utilizing the existing funds in our Austin Public Health Budget to continue to provide the case management to, um, connect folks to, to, um, housing. Also, um, we have about 2.4 million that is coming from ESG. And there's another million from CDVT. And, um, that will pay for case management, financial assistance, and housing assistance. And so our, our, um, we're collaborating with the case managers to, um, work with the folks that are in the protective lodges to move them into housing. So that is the goal.
Okay, okay, I knew that was the goal, and I very much appreciate that. Um, I just wanted to make sure that somewhere in all this, we had the dollars to effectuate that goal. So from your perspective, Director Hayden, do you feel like there's sufficient dollars to, to reach that goal? Uh, and our stated goals, is it for folks that are in pro-lodge, that we're going to get them into housing and they're not going to go back out on the streets?
Uh, that, that is our goal. As, as we, you know, the best laid plans, we can do everything we can, we can to do that. We have to understand that we're working with individuals that.
Well, sure.
Have various barriers, but that is the goal, yes.
And we, and from your perspective, we have the funding to, to accomplish that, understanding that there are other barriers that they have collected. But, but for, to your mind, the funding is there to accomplish that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Mayor, I have other questions, but I'll, uh, you can circle back around to me later.
That sounds good. Ed, on the dollars that you have, the money that comes from the CARES Act, we can apply 100%. Anything we're paying for with FEMA, we have to put up 25%, is that correct? You're unmuted, Ed. You're muted.
Sorry. Um, that is correct, and, uh, but we have been hearing some, some rumors that the Treasury guidelines may be softened, and we may, uh, eventually, they may make a determination that we can use our coronavirus relief fund to pay for the 25%. That's just a rumor at this point in time, so that's part of why we need a contingency, so that we can adjust if that opportunity presents itself for them.
And, and right now, you're assuming that the 25% is going to come out of the budget, the general fund budget somewhere, is that right?
Um, or, or any operating department budgets, you know? If there's other non-general fund departments that are part of the COVID-19 response, their budgets would be hit in that extra 25%.
Okay. I would just reiterate, at, at a high level, this is, uh, one, I appreciate staff laying it out this way. I would imagine that, that, that every month, these numbers could easily get rejuggled as we see more. Being, being able to predict right now what the lay of the land's going to look like through December is going to be really, really hard thing to do. And as we all look at the models for how this disease could run its course, maybe we could be looking at two more surges or no more surges. Uh, and, um, you know, if we actually got to 60,000 tests associated with an additional surge, we probably, as I look at it, uh, under budgeted the contact tracing capacity that would be necessary in order to, to be able to, to effectively contact trace that number of tests out in our community, to be able to isolate the virus. So from, you know, from, from where everybody sits, everybody's going to want to add more dollars from where I'm sitting. I wish we had more money in the contingency to help with that, just because I'm, I'm just real scared that we're going to be looking at that in the fall. But then I also recognize if we run into that in the fall, we're not going to be the only ones. Federal government's going to have to be doing things that they're not anticipating right now either. There's just so much uncertainty associated with all this. I thoroughly expected to move several times. Continuing on, yes, Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, I know, I, I saw a couple other hands, so, and maybe some other people who wanted to talk. I'm really excited to see the rent program, uh, be, be expanded. I know that rent is one of the biggest things that I've heard about. And it's not, you know, sometimes it's the people who need to pay the rent, and sometimes it's a landlord who maybe only has one extra property that, you know, they want to give their tenant a break and, and also be able to pay their mortgage on it. So I'm, I'm glad to see an increase in that program. I would, I would like to see even more. But I also have a question about what else may be coming down the pipeline financially. And I'm sorry, I didn't really brief this question, so if we don't have the exact update right now, I'm okay to, to do that offline. But I was curious if there is an expectation of a certain amount of funding to follow the original CARES Act, or if we know that information at this time, understanding, uh, there's a lot of moving parts, and that may not be known right now.
Ed?
I know Bree Franco's on the line, if she has any information about the, the bill that House passed and the potential for that to move forward.
Yeah, Ed, this is Bree Franco, can you hear me, guys?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Hi, Bree Franco, our Governmental Relations Officer. Uh, right now, Councilmember, the Senate, the House has proposed a bill called the HEROES Act. The, it is not expected for that bill to pass, but it has been passed as a starting negotiating place. But for the past two weeks, the Senate hasn't met. So that's where we're at right now. I would not, there is no information I can give you right now to be helpful for you to plan for future allocations from Congress for the state. And I'm sorry to be that blunt.
That's still helpful to know, at least, um, understanding, you know, how they're turning for us is, is helpful too. So I appreciate you keeping an eye on that.
I will say that, you know, the, the tone from the Senate is they want to see this money roll out, and they want to see how, what impact that has. What they need to do more going forward.
They wanted to see how the CARES is used before doing HEROES? Or did I understand that correctly?
Yes, that's what they've been saying. They want to see how this money rolls out, then to determine, I'm sorry, then determining after that, what they, where they need to fill in the gaps.
Okay, that, that's helpful, thank you.
Colleagues? Uh, Councilmember Harper-Madison?
I, I think it's safe to say at this point that whatever it is that I'm doing wrong, where you can't see me, chair. Uh, I, I, I do get to revel in the fact that most of my colleagues are saying the exact things that I'm concerned about. Um, and so, uh, Councilmember Kassar and Mayor Protem brought up a point that is a point of concern for me, in that there are members of our community who will have multiple opportunities to receive funding, and then members of our community who get one shot at it, um, in which case, I really want to make certain that we're taking a look at that. Then the other thing that I was looking at during the course of looking through this, you know, the newest iteration of the document, I just have some concerns about, and I think Councilmember Kitchen touched on this already, and, uh, Councilmember, uh, Ellis already touched on this. And in fact, um, uh, Mayor Adler, you touched on it too. I keep thinking about the limited supply here and the unknowns. So I'm very concerned about us, you know, I think Councilmember Flanagan said the thing about prudence, right? You know, I, I'm very concerned about us expending dollars by way of the general fund. So, you know, in that one column where it talks about where the money could possibly come from, I'm very concerned at how many times I see the general fund being referenced as the, the source of income, I mean, I mean, the source of expenditure. In which case, like, we just don't know enough about what's up, what's coming on the pipeline, and we don't know enough about what we're not going to be reimbursed for. And so, um, I know Ed Vanino is probably still on the line, in which case, I just, I have some particular questions about some of the specific sections. So, um, it's blocked out in a way that, you know, there's some eligible expenses. FEMA eligible, coronavirus relief eligible, community block development grant eligible, homeless emergency solutions eligible. I, I just, I'm, I'm very concerned that we are about to put ourselves in a position to where we are expending dollars by way of the general fund, when we don't know for certain that those dollars will be reimbursed. In which case, is there some calibration we should do to make certain that we don't, you know, inadvertently put ourselves in a tight spot? You know, when whatever may happen in five months comes to fruition? I, I'm, I just, I have some worries there. And I just wonder if there's something you could say to me and my colleagues or the general public about how we are being very conscientious about not expending funds that we could potentially not be reimbursed for out of our general fund?
I can speak to that. Um, and, and I think maybe we, this would be something good for me to put into a memorandum and send it to you, because I'm gonna, um, um, give you a bunch of numbers that. you a bunch of numbers that, um, I think would probably be better in writing, but, but broadly, to your question and Councilmember Kitchen's question about what are the sources of funding, this $270 million? Um, of course, you have the coronavirus relief fund, that's $170 million. FEMA is another big source of funding, so there's going to be a lot of these expenses that are eligible for FEMA reimbursement. We have a whole group that is working on that and an outside consultant that's helping us through that, um, that process, that documentation process. We would anticipate within this framework, 50 to 55 million dollars of reimbursements from FEMA. We also receive money from the CARES Act for the Community Development Block Grant Program and Homeless Emergency Solutions Grants, um, various other smaller dollar amount grants, but, um, I'd say the three big chunks would be that coronavirus relief fund of $170 million, FEMA reimbursement, say in the neighborhood of $50 million. We are looking to, all those general funds you saw, um, we are anticipating that our reserves will be drawn down about $25 million over the course of our response to this crisis. Now, we started, we entered into this crisis in a strong financial position with the 12% reserve policy, but we started out close to $26 million above that 12% policy. And, and so that's why we keep coming back to when we show multiple sources, is the need for flexibility. Yes, some of these, um, expenses that we're incurring will not be eligible for reimbursement from the federal government, and so that's why we know we're going to need some general fund dollars to come into play there. Um, and, and, and I think if we're given the flexibility as council moves forward with this framework, um, to look towards the best uses for these different funding sources, we're going to really be able to maximize what we get out of them. Um, and I am still hopeful, and I, uh, it concerns me to say this to you, but I feel it's important for you to hear, I am hopeful that within this framework, we will be able to end this fiscal year, um, and still be able to achieve our 12% reserve policy. We'll drag down our reserves some, but through these various federal reimbursements, um, and, and, and funds that are coming from the federal government, we're, and, and, and the hiring freeze and other actions the city is taking, we'll be able to navigate through this in a way where we can end that, that fiscal year and still have our 12% policy level. That's really important, because if there is a resurgence of the disease, we would still have a fully funded emergency reserve to take additional actions if the federal government's going to come forward with any, with any additional fund. So, um, I think your point's well made, it is a key part of this framework, um, but perhaps the way staff has presented it, you know, the broader dynamics, um, aren't clear, but they're definitely in our, in the front of our minds, and I think, um, the framework addresses those issues well.
John, did you have your hand up?
I'm sorry, do you mind if I?
Oh, go ahead. I, I, I thought he was also trying to answer your question.
I am, go ahead.
And you, you might be answering my question. I'm happy to listen, thank you.
So, I, I think that, that, and this is shot through a lot of, I think, the comments I've heard, is this notion of how do I, how do we make sure that we're using the money as efficiently as we can? And in the group that I was working with, we called it the Economic Recovery Panel, there were a couple of folks, Professor Tang and Professor Wright from Over U T and Angelo Sangelu, Charles Heinz Saath, Ray Perryman, me, a couple other folks. We kind of started using the word triage approach, and we don't mean that to say we're going to try to let people die. What we meant that to say was, we're going to ask you questions, Councilmember Kassar, we're going to say, look, if you're a business and you've gotten a paycheck protection loan, we're not, you're not on the first line for us. You know, if you've gotten an economic impact recovery loan, an EIDL disaster loan, I guess it's called, that's, you're not the first line for the city of Austin. Conversely, right now, if you're on unemployment and it's good unemployment, we need to serve the people who don't have those resources. So we are in this kind of funny position, and I was trying to allude to this earlier, that right now, there is this strong level of federal support. I think it's incumbent to try to say, we're helping the people, whether they're individuals or organizations, who aren't participating in that level of federal support. And then the next phase is, okay, you need rental assistance, your rent's 800 bucks a month, but you've got 400, we've got the other 400, as opposed to, here's 800 bucks. Because again, it's in the, it's in the spirit of trying to make not enough money go as far and as efficiently as possible as we are trying to navigate on through this, knowing that there are going to be other shoes to fall as we get further into the process.
Councilor Harper-Madison?
So I'll certainly say that, that, that helps, right? That, that additional measure is helpful, but I just keep thinking through, like, from this, like, a good example is the public health emergency component. Some of that seems to me as though we shouldn't incur those expenses from our general funds. Um, uh, or like, you know, Councilmember Kassar and Mayor Portim pointed out, if you're a housekeeper, you get a one-time access to this funding, but if you're an artist, you get multiple points of access to funding. And so I'm just, I guess I'm, I'm just very fearful that, given that I'm recognizing more and more, you know, especially as we're hearing from, you know, my colleagues and I, we all got the same emails the last several days, the series of emails that we've received about funding, how it was received and/or expended, um, we will never, as a municipality, we will never have enough to meet the need. And so in recognizing that, I'm just very fearful that we just have to be as conscientious as possible. And I think Mr. Hockenos just, you know, assured my, my concerns and my fears. I mean, we'll, we'll never meet the need, in which case, you know, what's the response and how do we respond generally to the public when we're saying, you know, while I can appreciate, Ed, you said, you know, some of the cuts that we're making and, you know, some of the, you know, concessions we're making will help us, but it won't relieve the pressure. In which case, I, I, I wouldn't know how to begin to answer people's questions when they ask us why we can't meet their needs. I wouldn't know how to begin to answer the questions around, just looking at these finite numbers. I'm looking at the columns, I'm looking at the dollars, I'm looking at where they come from, and none of it makes sense to me. And I think Councilmember Kitchen might have, you know, really just brought it home in that, I, I don't know how the numbers make sense and I don't know how to make them make sense for somebody else. So I don't know that I'm asking a question so much as making a statement, but any assistance that, you know, somebody's mathematically inclined brain, you know, that works in a way mine doesn't, can offer me to offer explanation to our constituents, that would be very helpful, because I, I can't see it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Colleagues, Councilor Poole?
Thanks. Um, okay, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions real quick. Potential CARES funding for economic recovery for all our small businesses. We'll be, uh, looking at an item next week, considering an item that I'm bringing to initiate a temporary permitting program to help small businesses recover more quickly. It's the Shop the Block Initiative that I posted about on the council message board. And so my, I have two questions. Since the purpose of that permitting program is economic recovery for small businesses that are affected by COVID, would we be able to waive fees for the permits and recover our staff costs under CARES? And then the second question is, could, uh, this question could apply to any of the economic recovery programs that we're running. Can we recoup any funds that the city may spend on marketing or education to the business community about available programs? So this would apply to marketing that EDD may do or that the Convention Center does through this of Austin, that sort of thing. Ed, what do you think? Are you, are you able to answer them here or shall I submit them and look for a written response?
I, 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 I think on the first part, um, it probably better have a written response. I think on, on some of these decisions, you know, it's kind of in the details of the program, how we actually would set it up, how we're going to be able to document, um, you know, to the extent it is, um, a program that economically supports a business that has been negatively impacted by COVID-19, then that, that's the general parameter. And so, um, we would just need to understand the details of it and, and again, it's about identifying the best, um, um, funding sources available to us as we actually implement these programs. And so, you know, I kind of want to just clarify in that framework, when you see all those general funds, think about it as eligible funding sources as opposed to, this is absolutely going to be used for this purpose. We're looking to identify what the eligible sources or funding are and asking council to give staff the flexibility to achieve your program policy goals within the funding we have available to us, while also managing the broader city budget and, and reserve policies and all that stuff.
Thanks for, for mentioning that and I appreciate the ask that's permeating all of the presentation today, for the flexibility, um, recognizing that times are fluid and unpredictable. And Mayor, you often talk about the iterative processes that we go through in order to fine tune things, and I think this is another one of them. I appreciate the work that staff has, uh, uh, all the efforts that staff has put toward bringing together this framework. I think it's a good one. I like the fact that we will be revisiting it over time, we'll be able to bend and flex the same way the monies will. And as to meeting everybody's needs, I mean, that is one of the heavy burdens that anybody in public service is always confronted with. We literally can't, so we do the best that we can. And I think the triage approach that John Hockenos was talking about is a, is a good way to kind of explain it. Um, I also would like to see very effective and efficient use of the funds that we are being given in these, um, uh, crisis times and make sure that while we may not be able to meet everybody's needs 100% or maybe even 75%, I'd like to see as many people helped some and as much as we can. And so those are the decisions that we'll have to just keep revisiting and, and reviewing and, and, uh, supporting over the next few months, for however long we're in, for however long we're in this circumstance. Thanks so much to staff.
Thank you. P O, Roderia?
Yes, yes, Mayor. You know, I also, uh, s- support the, uh, waiving the fee to some of these small restaurants when, if, if we could have the opportunity to have them use the parking lot or maybe somewhere in front of the street and, and, and get it to that point where, you know, we can waive the fees, because the more business that these restaurants do, and we don't have an ability to, to keep them from, uh, from stopping them, right now, they're operating at 25. I'm pretty sure the governor is going to come out and say, is he going to open up the restaurants at 50%? But if we could save, help these businesses spread out their, their seating arrangements, I think it would pay, any waiving of fees will pay for itself because of the added sales tax revenue that we'll be collecting. So I'm, I'm really excited about trying to experiment with some of this kind of programming. And the other question I have is for Stephanie Hayes, is that I read in the morning that the goal was to test 40,000 people a month. I'm just wondering, are we set, are we going to be buying those test kits? And if we are, or did we set enough money aside for those kits? Because I just saw 80,000 on, on this, uh, uh, report here about hiring 80,000 test kits.
Um, yes, so, so in all, we are, um, making a purchase of, um, 100,000 test kits, because we've already purchased, um, 20,000, um, early on and we're working our way through those. And, um, we've requested 2,000 test kits a week from the state, and so we are waiting to, to hear back from them. And then, um, within that plan also, um, because this was a federal plan and it calls, um, we use the CDC guidelines for the contact tracing in case investigation. And so, um, so that, they call for nine, um, investigators per 100,000 people, so that's why we put 115 in here. But in, I, inside of our budget, um, the National Association of City and County Health Officials, um, calls for, uh, a little more than that, um, I think my number is 15. And so we actually budgeted in this budget for 180 contact tracers for the city of Austin, but we've met with our partners, um, and they are willing to go up to at least 65. So in all, we have the potential to be scalable, to have about 245 contact tracers and, and investigators, um, from now until the end of the year.
Thank, thank you, because that's, that sounds, uh, uh, you know, I'm, I'm very alarmed because of what I'm seeing right now, that with, they're not keeping the social distancing that, you know, we, we recommended, and I'm sure there're going to be a lot more, you know, cases of, of, of infection. So I, I'm really glad that you, you're doing that.
Thank you.
Allison Alter, Councilor Alter?
Thank you. Um, first I wanted to say that I think this is a really helpful framework. Um, I appreciate how it prioritizes the public health and emergency response, and I think it's, um, you know, I think we are clear that, you know, everyone here is saying, you know, those buckets should stay where they are, maybe we need to add a few things more into that. So I think that offers a, a sense of, of, of clarity for us as a council about our priorities being on the health and emergency response and, and the conversation centered on the economic support. And I think, um, these buckets are a helpful way for, for thinking about it. I wanted to ask a couple quick factual, um, questions and then kind of make a few, few comments. So I noticed that for utilities, um, we only cited the $10 million of direct financial support, um, but I believe there was 25 to 35 million dollars in rate reductions running through October. Um, and it seems to me that if we're going to do an accurate accounting of how we're helping folks, um, that we should find a way, um, to capture that, um, within this, within this framework, um, or at least to note it somewhere. I know it's a reduction in fee and so it's, it's a bit, it's a bit different in that regard. So I wanted to note that. And then I wanted to ask, um, when Director Hayden mentioned the homelessness funding sources with the CBG and the ESG or whatever the alphabet soup is, are those numbers, are those numbers already in this total or are those additional to this number? So we talk about, we talked about the 170, but is this also the CARES Act HUD money calculated in or is that above and beyond that?
No, that, 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 the, the HUD funding's also part of this framework.
Okay, so that's already in there. Um, and then the business bucket, there was the 10 million or 11 million we had with, um, the clear fund, and then there was that balance, but then it says general fund for that one. Is that one another one that also has general fund or is that just, it's possible it could come from general fund?
It's just a potential, it's a, it's a, an appropriate funding.
Okay. Um, okay. Thank you. Um, one thing that I thought was missing from here, from the economic support, and maybe it's something we're doing generally, is that there are a lot of federal programs and I'm grateful that our federal government has stepped up as much as they have and I hope they'll do more. But we just got a email, if you're an AISD, about a food program. There was also an article in the New York Times about how this food aid was not reaching children, um, and that families were eligible for several hundred dollars in food relief, um, through cards that they were distributing, but that, um, a lot of people hadn't accessed that yet. And so we talked a little bit about having sort of case managers for businesses, but I'm just wondering if as part of this process, we have any kind of case managers for individuals, helping them to find the aid? I know we did the, the tax, um, support from foundation communities, but it seems like there may be a lot of ways to get additional resources to help people in our community that they may not know about, um, but that we could have an important convening role or connecting role. Um, so is that something we have covered in here in any way?
Um, we, we, we don't have that covered in there, um, but what we can do is, is we can reach out to AISD. As you, um, may remember, the, the, um, city funds a, a portion of their parent support specialist salary. Um, and, um, on a call yesterday, Dr. Cruz, um, spoke about having them to work some this summer. And so we can reach out to them and coordinate with them about that.
There may be children who are not in AISD, and that was just one example. You know, there's still maybe people who haven't gotten their tax refund or, you know, I, I just feel like there's a lot of different programs that we're, we're, we're hearing about that we may, like, if it may be useful for us to help people get their unemployment benefits faster and some of these things. And I just don't know how something like that would fit in this framework, because there may just be a lot of money there. I wanted to throw that out there. And then, then I, I wanted to speak to, so Councilmember Chris Carr mentioned the public health money that was, you know, providing relief to folks who tested positive or were in quarantine. And that was several million dollars, and that maybe that should go into public health. And I don't really care which bucket that's in, but I do think that is a form of direct financial assistance. It's targeted, so it also helps the public health. We had a provision in RISE that focused us on that. And so I think, you know, we may want to do above and beyond that, but that is direct financial relief, and it's still going to be helping folks who are in those vulnerable populations because that funding is targeted to, you know, an 80% MFI. I don't think it's anyone who's positive gets the financial assistance if they can't demonstrate need. So I just think that is an additional financial help that we have. So on this sort of general question of providing additional direct financial assistance, I would support providing some more of that. But I think we have to get a better sense of how much we're talking about so that we can understand where we might have to take that from. And also to recognize how much is already in here in various ways. I hear loud and clear the concern about some groups having access to that bucket multiple times. And I think that's something that we may need to flip some things around for. With respect to the nonprofits, and I'm sorry that Mayor Burtam is not here, that funding is critical for those nonprofits to be there for our community in every step of the way that they help our community. It was designed to help them make it through this period. Those nonprofits have cash on hand for maybe two to three months, otherwise they go under. And they're critical partners for us. And that funding, when you take off of the head of the executive director, the need to raise sort of some of that basic capital, they are really able to focus on the delivery of the services that they are delivering. And that is the hardest funding for them to get. What we have heard with respect to the RISE fund and the nonprofits is that there's not enough money in there for the operating support. You know, so that might be something we address elsewhere. But I think that kind of basic money, given the number of nonprofits we have, and we're going to need them through this process, whether they're delivering the direct services or not. The final thing, I wanted to talk a little bit about the recovery phase that Mr. Hockenios talked about. I know that we are trying to triage, and we're doing a lot. This budget is extremely heavy on the first phases. And now that we are several months into this, I think we do need to think more about what that recovery looks like, what a world looks like when you have 25% unemployment and there are no workforce development opportunities. I know that Councilmember Harper-Madison has talked several times in various forums I've been about, you know, we need to reinvent how we think about the workforce, and we need to help folks to pivot with how they're working and other things. And, you know, I'm pleased to see 2 million in there for workforce development. But I think we really need to think seriously about whether we need to have more money for workforce development, or if some of our small business money has to be focused on helping businesses to pivot. Because we can provide all the rent we want, but if there are no jobs there in three months or four months, and no organizations to help us through, we won't have bridged successfully. And there's no easy answers here. But I'd love to hear from Mr. Hockenios, who I think has his hands up of suggestions of how we make that pivot, the recovery.
I'm learning to go back to third grade, right, and raise my hand to be acknowledged. I think it's a great point, Councilmember. And in fact, I think that conversation is beginning. We're beginning to see the, at least people beginning to think about, how do we pull together as different institutions in the city, whether it's our different public sector jurisdictions, different private sector economic development groups, philanthropy, educational institutions? How do we all knit together in terms of both resources and a coordinated effort to respond to inevitably what is going to be a changed economic landscape, as you rightly point out, and develop a plan that sets us on the path to working through that? And that could have impact on skills development. It could have impact on helping existing businesses expand their business footprint. It could have some impact potentially in recruiting new businesses to the area. There'll be a lot of different things. We don't know yet. And one of the encouraging conversations, that all of this really starts best with both conversation and data. And we're beginning to get syndications of Workforce Solutions was telling us that they are close, I would say, within a month or so, of having a really robust data analysis system about who's actually in the unemployment insurance program, not just who they are, but their demographics, their occupation, their educational attainment, their previous income, all these different skill sets, all this different kind of information. If we can use that as kind of a foundation and build on that so that we better understand not only the people, but the businesses involved, and marry it all up, we can then really begin to say, who are we, where are our shortcomings, and where do we need to go from here in building this recovery plan? And that's one of the things, I think this is in the back of the mind of a lot of folks talking about the need for flexibility. What that's really saying is we got to keep some dry powder, because we don't really know what's coming down the road. I think, as you correctly pointed out, Councilmember, we want to make sure we have some resources, and I know that's a balance, but some resources that we haven't really tied up yet so that we are positioned to take the results of what will hopefully be this sort of comprehensive community process and really put it in there.
I really appreciate hearing about that effort. I think it's important. But nonetheless, we're not really giving ourselves much room in here if we think we need a lot of contingencies for the emergency or public health to be able to do some of these pivots. You know, and we have, you know, we know there are opportunities today to invest in further nursing education and other kinds of things like that. And the contact tracing could be reworked for workforce. And, you know, they're just, you know, this in combination with our budget, I think we really need to think about that workforce component so that people can pay the rent over multiple months, either because they're given a job through these programs, or because they've gained skills that let them get jobs. But, you know, we have an opportunity to do much more than we're doing. And that's what I'm struggling with in this framework, is I just don't, I don't think, I don't think it is yet giving us that unless we rely on the contingencies, which I think are rightly in the public health and emergency area.
Just real quickly, and then I'll shut up. I think one of the things that we would hope would happen would be that other sources of funding would join with the city. So to multiply the resources that are available. And those conversations aren't far and awful long yet to sort of call out who that might be or how much might be involved. But ideally, that's what would happen, would be that we wouldn't have to just rely on city resources and CARES funding to carry the financial burden of what we're talking about.
Councilmember, if I could add on to that, to Ed's point, we are trying to be flexible and flexible in the framework as well. We certainly get that workforce development is a huge issue, and conversations that we're having now on how we can be a part of that partnership. But we do see that there might be some flexibility that we need in moving funds around so that we're addressing that as that becomes more apparent and what the next steps are.
Thank you. Kathy, do you have any questions before I start round two? Go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a lot of questions. I think I will tackle first one of my overall questions, and then some of my questions about rent, and then, and then maybe save some of the other ones for second round. So I appreciate the conversation with Ed Benino about the chart and how the funding sources are listed. And it, it seems to me that, I think the second time you talked about it, you talked about it as available or viable funding sources. But I, I guess I would, what is important to me, and I think it's the perspective that all of you are operating under, is that we use the most eligible, that we use our federal dollars before we use reserve funding. And so, you know, I think about it in the way that Carla used to talk about kind of a flow of funds. I hope our flow of funds will always be to seek out those FEMA dollars for the more general federal funding before we rely on money that was already within our operating budget, so that we are getting reimbursed for as many things as possible for those new expenses. Is that kind of the way you're conceiving of it, Ed? And I guess my question, my second part of my question would be, you know, because there are, I mean, because it's sort of all hands on deck, and every department in the city is working on this, I wonder, I don't know if this is a question for you or the manager, my secondary part of that question would be, is there one staff member who is going to over, going to provide oversight and make sure that we're doing that in every case? We had a conversation, for example, about the rental assistance, and it was taken out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I made the amendment last week, or whenever we had a meeting, to replenish the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, since that's likely an eligible expense under the federal money, so that we, so that we're preserving our more flexible funding for the future. But is there, given that these things are happening again across the city, is there one staff member who's going to be sort of the ombudsman of the spending decisions to make sure that we're always using, so that, to make sure that we're always, the flow of funds is always the most, the most beneficial in terms of preserving our flexible funding for flexible options? And I should just say, as a caveat, I understand that's not how Carla used, she was talking about a completely different context. And I just like that expression as we think about the decision-making apparatus that has to be deployed for this kind of operation.
Well, I'll start, Councilmember. That's a great question, then have Ed chime in as well. But Ed has put together a team that has really guided this discussion across the different departments. As you know, we have incredible professional experts in our city organization. And as they look at what other folks are doing within these programs, within these funds, they're able to have those conversations in real time. And so, you know, Ed's really leading that group. But it is a collaborative effort across the team. And we can bring back that slide to show you who's all part of that group. But many of them are on this call right now. Ed, did you want to add anything else?
I would just add that the flow of funds, I think it's an appropriate use of the term here. And I think you hit it right on the nose. We're going to first look to FEMA. Anything that's reimbursable from FEMA will be our first go-to. And as I mentioned earlier, we are like most large cities, most cities, we have a consultant that's an expert in FEMA reimbursements, and is helping us guide us through that government process. And we're doing everything we can to document our expenses. And we'll go to FEMA first. I think coronavirus relief fund needs to be looked at second, because there's timelines in regard to when that funding needs to be used. And then, you know, some combination of the HUD funds and the general fund after that, maybe just depending upon the circumstance, maybe circumstances where it makes more sense and most advantageous to us for us to deploy the HUD funds. And in other circumstances, maybe it would be the general fund. But I think that would broadly be the, what we'd be looking to. And, you know, it's, we're too far away from the finish line to know exactly how that's going to play out. And that's why you see on all these funding sources, kind of more so what would be appropriate funding sources and any kind of statement about, for sure, this is how much we're going to take from these different buckets.
Thank you. I think that's really helpful. I guess, I mean, what you're saying is that the prior, that what I'm hearing, and I think it's what you're saying, is that the prioritization will always be for those federal sources first before we look to general funds. You offer that there might be situations in which it's advantageous to use general fund sources. And I'm not, I guess we don't have to answer that question now, but I would want to understand, what are those, what are those circumstances, given that, you know, we have so many other demands on that?
Well, there are restrictions and limits to how we use these different federal funding sources. And so we'd be looking to the general fund really as a last resort. If there's programs that we are needing to fund and councils wanting to fund that are eligible for the federal funding.
That makes complete sense. That would be the only, I mean, it seems like that would be the only circumstance that would make that a priority fund over one of the federal if it's just not eligible under the others. One comment I did want to make, I see that the food assistance is in here. Thank you for having that in there. That is to, just to be really clear about that, I'm not sure how that, I'm glad that there's some additional, I think I need to better understand the funding, actually, in this piece. So before I talk about, before I ask my questions about housing, I want to ask questions about this issue. So food assistance is 5.4. It's my understanding we've already committed to with regard to the caregiver meals in Del Valley and in AISD amounts to 2.2 million. And so is that additional 2.2 already expended through RISE?
Yes. That additional 2.2 million for food assistance went to the Capital Area Food Bank.
So I would just say that then that figure does not include the possibility of assisting in some of those other districts. And so I know in our, in our Social Services Cabinet, for example, we've had the conversation about Maynor ISD and some of the other ISDs. And I'll let Councilmember Harper-Madison talk about that issue. But we know there is need beyond just AISD in Del Valley. And I would just point out that this dollar figure doesn't allow for that expansion. So that's a concern for me. And I would also just say, it is certainly food assistance. But I want to be really clear that this is also economic assistance, because with AISD, the vendors they have contracted with to prepare those meals are primarily restaurants, in fact, entirely restaurants. And so they're, you know, this is really assistance to our small businesses. It's really an economic development program right now, or economic assistance program right now to our small businesses that have been so impacted. With Del Valley, they are also contracting with one vendor, or we are contracting with one vendor. But that vendor is going to be able to reemploy individuals who are laid off during this period of time. So in both of those cases, while it is certainly providing that basic need, meeting that basic need for the families who will benefit from it, is also an economic assistance. So how we talk about that, I think is important. I just want to be sure that my colleagues have that piece of information about how that's, how that's working. Mayor, have I used up my question time, or can I move on to rent? I can't hear you.
Let's pass it around, but we'll come back to you.
Mayor, if I may, as we're going through round two, you know, staff would also appreciate any additional feedback on what you would consider from council as a next step from this conversation. As you know, this came from a resolution that was from council, and we're hoping that this framework has been helpful in guiding these discussions. But we also know that this is a snapshot in time, and it will evolve. And we have a lot of unknowns as we chart our course into the next coming weeks and months. So I could see a range of options for a possible next step, including, you know, attaching this framework to the next council meeting for a vote. That would be the entire document. You could also choose to vote on just the big categories of spending, if you will, those three big buckets and the amounts underneath. We could also just do a kind of a fist to five, if you will, in this meeting right now, just to see if we're heading in the right direction and making sure that there, that we are adhering to the general categories and ways in which council wants staff to be directing this funding, with the assumption that we will be continuing to update council as we move forward and as we learn more. And so I just, I put that out there, that as you go through this next round and ask questions, any additional feedback on the direction that we want to go from here would be helpful to get. So thank you very much.
Okay, manager. All right, let's do another round. It is 3:40. Ann.
Okay, just quickly, let me think that staff and respond to city manager's question. I definitely feel that we have, first off, I appreciate the staff putting this all together. I do understand the need for flexibility for all the reasons that everybody has articulated and the importance of contingencies and that sort of thing. I am open to what the rest of the council would like to see happen in terms of how we move forward. I think this, I agree with I, I think this, I agree with this framework. I think this general framework is, is a good framework. I'm open to some moving of things around if that's the, what council wants to do. But I think all in all, the general framework and the total dollars we have in each, in each of the three big buckets makes sense to me. And I'm happy to just vote on those big buckets if that's what people want to do. I'm happy to get more granular if people prefer to do that, to do that. So, and then I just want to comment on a few things that people have said. You know, really, we, we have said that this is about balance. And it's, it's about a combination of things. It's about a balance, it's about triage and recovery. How much do we put into just immediate help? And how much do we look to recovery? Because I think as someone said, if we, we, it's, we don't have jobs, then, then we're not going to have recovery. And people are, people need income and they need jobs at the end of the day. So how do we, how do we make sure that people have the basic needs that they have to live? While the same time, we help make sure that our businesses recover so we have jobs for people to go to. So, and that's the hard balance that we're all trying to, to reach right now. I also want to say that the other kind of thing that we're balancing is direct care, or not direct care, but direct dollars versus buckets of dollars. And we've done that in a couple of different ways. So, for example, council member Flanagan said that you've got, that mentioned that you love to look at, you know, food assistance, rental assistance, utility assistance, assistance for vulnerable folks, the RISE fund. Those all get at basic needs. So they, they get on them in different ways. The RISE fund is more of a direct, direct dollars that covers a range of, of needs. Whereas rental assistance is a bucket for a particular need. You know, the utilities was a bucket for a particular need, food is a bucket for a particular need. I don't know which is better, but I think we should acknowledge that we have a mix of those going on right now. So I don't, I don't think we can say that unless we put more dollars into direct, into a bucket that gives direct dollars without a particular type of service, I don't think we could say that we're not doing that. In other words, I'm open to putting more dollars into the RISE fund. But if we don't, that doesn't mean that we're not covering rental and food and utility and other basic needs that people have. So I think we need to, to acknowledge that. The other thing is the, we've done the same thing on, you know, direct versus buckets in the business sector. We've identified buckets for small business, we've identified buckets for nonprofits, we've identified buckets for creatives. And I do not believe that, that, that creatives have, have more multiple points of access than others do. We have created multiple points of access because we have a mix of direct and buckets of types. So individuals have multiple buckets. Any individual has a multiple bucket for rental assistance, for food, for the RISE fund, for utilities. And in the business sector, you may have a creative, you may have a music person who's a small business who may have access to a small business fund as well as a music fund. So, so I just want us to be careful in how we characterize. Because I don't think that what we're doing is, is unfair in terms of people's access to dollars. We may decide, and it may make more sense to put more into a bucket that just gives people direct dollars that they can then see what they need to spend the dollars on. In a lot of ways, that makes sense to me. But it's not inherently more fair than a bucket for rental or a bucket for, you know, for utility or anything like that. And I would say the same thing, and council member Casar, I really appreciate what you're saying, but I would never characterize giving funds for the creative sector as, as pulling out a certain type of person and not recognizing another, a certain type of work and not recognizing another type. To me, it's more akin to the small business bucket and the small business bucket and the nonprofit bucket. It's about work. It's about their ability to produce income and have a business, which is a type of need, I think. Now, that doesn't mean that I don't agree with you, that I would like to see more, you know, like to see more in basic services. And that perhaps the best way to do that is, I've been very impressed with the way the RISE fund has worked. But I just want us to be careful about how we talk about it. Because I, this is, to my mind, this is not saying that, that a person in this bucket is more important than a person in this bucket. It's all about the different avenues in which people have access. I mean, we could choose to just say, we don't need all these different buckets. We're just going to say, for basic needs, everybody gets X dollars. And for business, everybody gets X dollars. And then we don't try to divide it by types. We, that's not what we've done here. So again, I, all I'm trying to say is, I, I, I think we should be careful. I, I want to be, I personally want to be careful. So, so then the last thing is that I, I just want to say to, I want to make a comment on the access for smaller landlords. I think I heard Rosie say, Director Trulove say that, that there were some efforts happening in that regard. And I'd like to ask her again if she has a timeline in mind for that. And I just wanted to make sure I understood correctly what she was thinking might happen in that area.
Sure. Hi, council member. We are, I have a meeting set up with the Apartment Association and ABOR on Tuesday afternoon to help kind of do some additional thinking and conversation about that issue. Recognizing that the current rent program is set up really as more tenant-focused, that we recognize the need for the landlords that are having, you know, for lack of a better term, being ghosted by their, by their tenants and, and wanting to make sure that however we establish that program, that we're able to tie for rent, that we're able to tie the assistance back to a low-income individual who's been impacted by COVID. So they don't mesh well together in that respect, but we do recognize the need. So we're going to just have some meetings. Veronica Bersenio will be included on that from the city side and we'll start to brainstorm and troubleshoot the problem there.
Well, I just want to encourage us to, to, you know, continue that work. From my perspective, it's all about rental assistance for individuals. And I see the smaller landlords as another avenue for, for reaching that same goal. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Finally, I don't, this is a question for, I think maybe for John Hockenios or for others. I haven't seen, I would love to see some kind of, you know, we've been talking about the needs, the, the importance of marrying up the need with what we're doing. And I haven't seen data that shows me we're doing that. I mean, I've seen some data, some data in different buckets, you know, that shows me that we have rental needs or we have this need or we have that need. But I'm, I'm not really seeing the, the kind of data that supports the connection between what we're doing and the needs that we see. Whether those are immediate basic needs for triage or whether they are to get our economy going and again, and jobs. So is there any, or maybe this is a question for Director Bersenio or for John Hockenios, I don't know who. But is there going, are we going to see that at some point? Are we going to see some kind of analysis that will help us understand? I mean, I'm just not comfortable continuing to say that there's just more than we could ever do. But I want to understand what that means in terms of, of what the needs are.
Veronica, do you want me to answer or do you want to take the first step?
Do you mind starting to talk about general ideas on how it's a need and I'll go into what we're doing as a city?
So it's a great question, right? I mean, I'm the guy earlier saying we need good data to make good decisions. And part of the issue is, you know, this, the pandemic is what, call it weeks old at this point. And so we don't have a lot of really good data yet that's actually based on what's actually happened. That was why it was exciting, as I mentioned earlier, to talk to Workforce Solutions. They're beginning to drill in and really put together the capacity for us to understand who is accessing the unemployment insurance system, for example. Veronica and her team are collecting information about who is, who are actually accessing information through their programs, who are coming to them saying, hey, we need some assistance. So we're still building that capacity. I mean, we certainly made some guesses based on an understanding of where we think the impacts are likely to fall, that we've kind of sketched out. But at this point, their forecasts and their projections, the more information we have, the better off we're going to be. And from my point of view, we are, if there's a modest silver lining in this overall thunderstorm, it's that we have gotten this large level of federal support, which has given us a little bit of time, not completely, but a little bit of time to put together this information capacity to understand who is coming forward and also who is likely to be coming forward. So we don't have the data yet, council member Kitchen, we're beginning to get a feeling on it. It's interesting, for example, that when we were, when Director Bersenio and I were doing some work looking at the folks who were coming to them in, for business assistance through their program, they tend to be in the industries that are the first ones that are hit. The lodging industry, the hospitality industry and all that. And it was interesting to note as a point that those tend to be disproportionately owned by people of color, by women, by, and they tend to be disproportionately small businesses. And that squares with what we know, that those tend to be the folks who have been less successful at accessing federal business support than other businesses have had. So we're beginning to get our arms around it, but it's going to be a little bit of time before we have as good a data as I think we can reasonably get. And what we are hoping is, as we get that data in hand, we can bring it back to you all and make it that much easier for you to make good decisions, database decisions going forward. And that's a matter of weeks, not, you know, quarters, right? And that's part of the reason why folks have been saying, let's sort of identify our priorities with these categories, but be flexible about actual amounts because the real-world information may cause us to make, make some adjustments along the way.
So I would just add to that, we're, we realize data is a need. We're continuing to roll that into everything that we're doing. We're assessing what other, other entities have done surveys, for example, the Greater Austin Chamber, each of our minority chambers. And so we're making sure that we're, we're looking at all that data from multiple agencies and entities. And then we, as a city, in all of our departments and all the contracts that we're trying to roll out, we're trying to set those contracts up so that our service providers are collecting that data as well, so that we can continue to report. So we're, we're learning as we go, but we're trying to make sure that we're putting those stopgaps in place so we can collect as much data and make recommendations to you based on data.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Garza.
I just want to make, as we're talking about what we all need to recognize, we all have to recognize there is inherent equity issues in every system, in every program that we create. And so I think the point that Councilmember Casar was making with, and I, and Councilmember Harper Madison as well, with the, some people have more opportunities. We, we can't pretend that that's not true for, for a variety of reasons. Not just what job you have, just for, you know, the disproportionate effect we're seeing in the Latino community and the African-American community. It's because of engagement and, and education and trying to reach those groups. So there is inherent inequities. And when, for example, if I am a housekeeper, I have the opportunity, yes, I have the opportunity to go for RISE funding, for, for rental assistance, for direct food. But I, I wouldn't qualify for the creative funding. But the, but when you look at the reverse, if I'm a creative, I have access to the creative bucket, to the RISE bucket and to, and to a variety, to every single other bucket. I think that's the point that other council members were trying to make. And Councilmember Kitchen, I was on mute when you were talking, would you? Are you on mute?
I, I'm not, I'm not saying anything.
I know, but you can hear the background noise.
Oh, all right, I didn't realize I wasn't on.
That's okay. Got it.
And so the point being that even if, even if there are other buckets for rental assistance, for example, one of the nonprofits, let's say El Buena, which didn't get a second round of funding. If I was a recipient of that whatever, a $500 debit card, the only reason that person was probably a recipient is because they, they trusted El Buena. We picked certain organizations because of their reach into vulnerable communities, of their ability to connect with certain communities. So that person, if they don't, if, if there's no second round for certain nonprofits, and I don't want to specifically talk about any, that means that's probably their last, that's it. We gave them, you know, one month maybe of half their rent. And even though there are other buckets, even though there's rental and there's food, it doesn't mean they're going to have the opportunity or the ability or to even know that they can access those buckets. And so the, I just want to make sure we understand that, that there are some, I know, I absolutely understand that there is an unlimited amount of need and we won't be able to meet every single one of those. But by not having an avenue for, for people who could not qualify for federal stimulus, who only have a connection to help through a certain organization that as of right now is not going to get funded again because there is no new money for the financial assistance under RISE, they likely will not get any more help. No matter how many more buckets out there, there, that, nothing guarantees that they're going to get rental through the rental bucket. Nothing guarantees that they're going to get food through the food. I just want to, RISE provides a specific kind of funding for a specific need. That doesn't mean that person's going to get access to anything else. And so at this point, those people, those families, there, but there's no more, there's no more assistance for them. You know, the, the likelihood that there is no more assistance for those families. And so that is why I hope we can find another way to invest in, in, in that bucket of RISE.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Renteria?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. You know, I, I agree with my colleague there with the mayor Protem. You know, I always saw RISE money as something that gives us some flexibility to go out and help the members of the community that, you know, are dropping the loopholes, you know. And I, I always felt that that would give us the opportunity to be more flexible. And I thought we also that we were going to reimburse some of that money that we did get from the CARE Act to, into this program. And, and so I really wish that we could, you know, you know, reimburse the RISE program so we could use that for a more flexible reason in the, in the future. And, and, you know, I also want to really thank the staff, you know, I, I, how they came out and put all this spreadsheet together in the presentation. It was, it's a great job. And, and John, I really appreciate what you said because we do have to be flexible. And, and I know things are going to change as it come on, as, as the economy opens up slowly. But it is, it is what the governor is going to do. And, and, and there will be more jobs out there. But we, we know for a fact that these jobs are going to be opening, are people, a lot of them are going to be people of color. And they're going to be exposed. And I want to make sure that they're not afraid to take a test because they need, you know, they know that they're going to be out for quarantine for two weeks and they don't have sick leave. And if, if, if we allow them to keep having to go back to work so they, they can earn a paycheck, then we're never going to get out of this problem that we're in right now. You know, we, I'm really afraid of that. So I, I know the way they're set up is, is real fluid. You know, the, I know that some of this money, a lot of the groups that are going to be applying for it because of what they received before and, you know, the paycheck protection that they, they, money that some of these businesses receive. And probably not all of them going to be able to qualify for that, for that money. But, uh, you know, and I know that in the future, we're going to be, uh, we're going to have the opportunities to see exactly what we have and what we're going to have working for, with us, what we're going to have to work with. So that's very important to me. And I know that, I hope so, that we can put some reimbursement of RISE money so that we can use it in the future for, for those kind of type of programs. What I just said about maybe helping people stay home, you know, and, and not infect other people and don't have to be worried about, you know, having to earn a paycheck. But that's. having to earn a paycheck. But that's what I would like to see. Thank you, and thank the staff.
Okay. Councilmember Tovo.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some specific questions about the rent program. So there was a reference to, that I didn't understand, about the past payments being either fair market value or actual rent. And I wonder, Rosie, if you could just, or Director Truelove, I wonder if you could just start by explaining what you meant?
Sure. As we set up the rent program, we, we establish either a fair market rent, a payment of either fair market rent or the actual rent, whichever was lower, recognizing that not everyone is charging what we, it, they may be charging more than that, or, or potentially less than that. But wanting to get folks comfortable with the concept of fair market rent, and working on that as kind of the, the baseline for what we would be paying through the rent program initially.
And so in other words, if somebody was paying more than what you would consider to be fair market rent, they might, they would get only the fair market, half of the fair market. Okay. I'm sorry, I just couldn't follow that in the earlier conversation. Thank you.
That's okay.
We, there was a discussion at the Housing Committee about whether individuals who are staying in hotel, hotel, long-stay hotel or motels would be eligible. Are you adjusting the eligibility moving forward with this program, so that individuals in those kinds of housing settings can be, can apply?
So that's something that we are considering as well. In the initial iteration of the program, we were requiring that folks have a standard lease. And as we go into, as we go into the next iteration, we're going to see how that can be adjusted to take that into consideration. We don't have, again, we don't have a solution on that yet, but it is on the list of things to talk about as we, as we get more in-depth into program design.
I would see, I would see that as a, as a priority. And I think we may have even talked at the Housing Committee about ways to do that by, by providing receipts and things like that. The other group that I wanted to ask about are those living in mobile homes who are on kind of rent-to-own situations, and whether you've considered how they might also be made eligible for rental assistance.
I, we'll add that to the list, and we'll, we'll talk about that with the, with the team this morning.
Super. Thank you. Okay. Now to switch gears a little bit back to the line item for shelters and quarantine facilities. And this really gets to the question that Councilmember Kitchen asked earlier, and I heard the answer, but didn't fully understand it. Director Hayden, I, I heard you say that there was funding within those, within, I think, that category, or maybe it was another category, to assist individuals who are currently in our prologes in securing more permanent housing. And I wanted to ask whether, what wasn't clear to me in the response, whether that was just kind of the case, case management necessary to identify those options, or whether it was also some form of rapid rehousing dollars that would actually help pay for that housing for a period of time. So is it actually the housing dollars, or just the supportive case management dollars that are included within the funding?
It is both, the, the housing and the case management dollars. The additional case management dollars come from the Emergency Solutions Grant, so the ESG.
That's super good. Thank you. And apologies, I think you may have answered that question. I just didn't hear the response clearly. Thank you so much. And that's good. I think that's really good news. I may be losing my, I may be at my last question here. I have more, but in terms of courtesy to my colleagues. This is a question that I would like to have answered at our Monday electric, Austin Energy meeting. I'm interested in knowing where we stand with regard to utility bill assistance, like how much of that has been accessed. And it's primarily, most of our programs were aimed at residential consumers, ratepayers, but I would be interested to know whether any of that utility bill assistance was made available to commercial tenants. And then Director Hayden, I'll make my last question for the moment, one that I think is for you. On page one of the spending framework, public health and safety measures, there's a discussion about that this includes facility, APH facility renovation funds to modify lobbies and reception areas, behavioral health counseling support, and sanitization. Can you help me understand, if you know it now, or maybe afterward, how that 2.9 breaks down among those categories? In other words, how much is for lobbies and reception renovations? How much is for counseling support? How much is for sanitation?
Yes. Okay. So there is, yes, so there is a million dollars for additional behavioral health and counseling supportive services. Can I see, if I'm looking at the right line? Oh, it's called public health and safety. Okay. Yes. And then with the, with the renovations, and so this is, well, we have public-facing facilities that are right now operating more mobile, and we've modified. We know we're going to need to, you know, open our doors back again to be able to provide those services. So if there are any type of either partitions or do make some changes to our reception areas, and so that is a little over a million. And the, I think that total line is 2.5 million, right?
2.9. So that gets us pretty close.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay. And, and that gives me a sense of it, and I really appreciate it. And maybe if you have an opportunity to follow up with that detail after.
Yeah, I can send it to you. And the sanitation is about 50K. So I can send that to you.
That's super useful. Thank you.
I'll make sure it goes to everyone. That way everyone will see the answer to that question.
Thank you, Director Hayden. You have more questions, but I'll, I'll end for the moment. And if, if there's a third round, I, I have some more for that one.
Hey, sounds good. Thank you. Colleagues, anybody else want to ask any questions? Allison.
Thank you. First, I wanted to just follow up on Councilmember Tovo's comments on utility. In Austin Water, we've heard that there was still some room for folks to be using the water assistance, at least at that point in time. We weren't tracking to where you might have expected that to have been used. And then we also discovered that for the water assistance, that wasn't helping a lot of the multifamily properties, and that we had asked them to look into that more. I'm not sure if that's a problem for, for the Austin Energy, but I think it's something that we should look into. That was part of what prompted me when we, we voted on the, the RISE funding contracts last week, that to say that we need to make sure we're getting the utility assistance information out to people. But, but for water, there was definitely some piece there that could be utilized more. And we had asked Austin Water staff to look into that. That's a problem that they had before COVID, that they were trying to crack, because they don't have individual water heaters. So I wanted to also note that in response to Councilmember Renteria's comments before, that I think that, that need of, of rent and being able to stay home is built into the public health piece of the financial and other direct support, as I understand it. So I, I think that there's, there's over 5 million, maybe it's 7 million in there for that kind of, kind of support. So I just want to flag that being in there. In, in response to, to the manager's question, though, which I think is one we need to figure out, is, you know, how do we want to proceed with this framework that we asked for, which I think was very helpful for us to get our thinking together and to see kind of where, where staff were at. I would venture to say that if we did a fifth to five, that probably the first two pieces would get five. And then on the economic support section, it, you know, sounds like there's, you know, a desire to have some additional direct financial or rental assistance, if we can figure out where, we probably don't yet have agreement out of where that would, would come from. I've expressed the desire to have additional workforce funding, whether it's from this framework or as we build out the budget. I think we, we need to pay a little bit more attention to that recovery. The other thing that I think there may be some, some clarity might help is on the rental assistance. So we've talked about some of the benefits of the method that we use for RISE, of using the different organizations. I don't see anything in this additional, I don't know, 18 million of rental assistance, that does how that's being divided, other than that it would be a payment that would go directly to the landlord, so that we knew it was rent. But that doesn't stop it going from, through organizations that have better connections out into the most vulnerable populations. Does that, I mean, do we know any more about how that is set up?
Hi, Councilmember. What we are envisioning is that we would partner with a, a number of nonprofits throughout Austin, and that we would use them to receive the, you know, to basically provide the intake for the applications from the individual residents themselves that might need assistance. And, and those folks can also in turn then help with outreach to folks that might be in need of rental assistance. So we don't have them identified yet, but we're looking for folks that would have, excuse me, the, the experience with income qualifying people for similar type programs.
Well, one might venture that it would be some of the same organizations that did the initial round of, of RISE funding.
Potentially. And those are certainly on our, on our mind of, of potential partners, but we haven't identified them yet.
Okay. So, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure at what point we need to vote on, on the framework per se, but, but I think that's where I, from what I'm hearing, that's what, what we are, where I stand on a, you know, a fifth to five type, type situation. And that's just, wanted to kind of lay it out there, because I think we do have to figure out what our next steps are and get some clarity, particularly if there's some sort of vote next week, which I don't know whether we have to have a vote. I think this was a useful exercise and a useful way of, you know, coordinating our thinking.
Okay. Councilmember Casar?
To answer the manager's question, I, I generally agree with how Councilmember Alter summarized where we are. So given that I, and I think several others and folks have expressed wanting to move the balance some, I can't think of, of another way other than just to take a vote on those limited categories. I think what I'm hearing is that there's actually really broad agreement on a lot of parts of this, but that there is just some modification among, among some of the economic recovery items, where there are, where we probably all agree that there should be increases to each of those funds. But, you know, in my view, we should increase the funds that are directly to people a little bit more, given all of the dynamics we've talked about today. So I don't know of a way to achieve that, and to get to consensus or make a decision without just taking, having a little bit of debate and taking a quick, a quick vote on some numbers. So if anybody else comes up with another way, I'd be happy to look at that. But I think there's consensus on almost everything. We could leave that alone. Sounds like there's just a limited amount of vote that would need to be taken.
Councilor Tovo?
Well, I think that, I have to think a little bit more about what, what I regard as kind of our next steps forward, the question that the manager asked. I mean, if we are, if we're going to weigh in on whether the allocation in the big buckets is, I really can't stand the term buckets, in the big categories, is where we're going to leave our voting, then I'm not sure that we need to take votes on the individual line items at this point. I think we can get some more information, among other things, about how a little bit more granular information would be helpful in terms of the amount of rental assistance we need, and how those, how those other really basic needs are going to be allocated. I'm still a little unclear on some of the categories within here. I could name a few. Like on page two, under rental assistance, we've had an opportunity to talk about it a little bit, the grants to the landlords. It's not clear to me whether those are residential or commercial in that category. If they might be commercial. Anyway, I just think we have more conversations to have around some of these categories and what is included within them that are basic needs. But if we're, I'm not sure that we're, I think we may have a consensus around the general top-level categories of funding. So, you know, to me, that, that kind of begs the question about what, how, how, how exact and detailed we'd want to be at this point. I'm inclined toward a more general approach at the moment, just because in looking at some of the line items I'm most familiar with, I see, I see a need to adjust them. I mentioned food assistance slash economic assistance before, because we know we have other school districts that stand to benefit from, from that kind of work. So, let's see. I wanted to just underscore a couple points I heard that I agree with and, and wanted to see some more thought around. Again, the general category seems to me to make best sense, because it allows for us to have flexibility within those. Councilmember Alter raised an important point, and a few others have amplified it with their agreement. I, I would like to have additional discussions in this forum, and perhaps in the Economic Recovery Cabinet, about what, what some additional long-term investment strategies might look like. And I, I know that other municipalities are, are having those conversations too. We passed one of them, that CCC program, I think, is one of those longer-term investment strategies, that we're, we're enlisting individuals and providing them immediate economic assistance, but also hopefully skills that could, that could lead to future employment opportunities. And I would support some more creative thinking and, and believe that we need some more creative thinking around what some of the other longer-term investments are. I had a last question. I'm going to have to leave it for now, because I've forgotten what it is, but it surrounds workforce. So if it, if it comes to me before we conclude, I'll come back to it. I appreciate all the work that the staff did. I think this is extremely helpful and really advances our thinking about, about the scope of, of needs and the scope of opportunities to help meet those needs. So thank you.
I like the general categories as well, manager. And, and, you know, I think that this is really helpful to show the breadth of what it is that has to be covered by the dollars that we have. I'm not real sure what the next step is, so, so as to not have kind of academic discussions over something before it's teed up. But one of the things that I like about this is that all our spending choices require us to make decisions between things. And, and we weren't doing that up to this point, as we were trying to immediately address real significant needs that were directly in front of us. But even just having this level of document means that, that as we have future conversations about spending, it's going to necessarily involve choices and, and setting priorities and comparing strengths. So I think that, that's going to be a better context to have all those conversations, and, and maybe make more sense when there's a specific proposal, we consider something to, to take a look at it, and at that point in that context. But as a general, at the high level, in terms of the three buckets, I think I agree with my, my colleagues, that generally, I think this is a good place to, to frame that later conversation, or those later conversations. Anybody have anything else? 420, Councilmember Casar?
So, so how are we going to decide whether we're taking this up in a week or not? I mean, because otherwise, we won't have another chance at a public conversation to do this. So what's the next step from here?
So one, one proposal, and, and again, this is just a, in real-time brainstorm, but it seemed like there was a lot of agreements on the larger buckets. But the point of discussion, which is very healthy, and, and we think- But the point of discussion, which is very healthy and and we think useful for staff, did we get the right balance between support for individuals and businesses and the economic recovery bucket? And so we could do potentially a fist-to-five just right now to see how off or is there a need to revisit that? But if if we feel like we're generally in the in the right framework, then we can move forward with that. But if we see that there needs to be recalibration, then staff will take that and do that recalibration and come back with a different framework. But that could be, that could be one option to pursue. But this was Councilmember Kitchen's resolution, so I see her hand is up.
Yes, our kitchen.
Oh, well, one route is we could, we could ask you, City Manager, to to make some adjustments. And then we could, if, then we could vote on that, on, then the vote we could take could be on the big buckets, assuming people are comfortable with the adjustments that are made. If that's the route that people want to take, then I would suggest some adjustments that put some more dollars into the RISE fund. And I would consider where you might get those additional dollars from. You you could, you could consider the kind of suggestion, and I don't know if it was actually a suggestion from Councilmember Flanagan, but he did, he did mention that the time horizon. So perhaps there are some of these dollars that would be spent later out that we could put to these more direct needs right now, as I consider the RISE fund to be more immediate needs. So we could perhaps do that. I I don't have other suggestions at this point, but but that might be a route if there's if there's an ability to to make some some adjustments so that folks could see some additional dollars in the areas. What I'm hearing is the the desire for some additional dollars related to the, what I'll call the direct dollars. I'm wondering also if 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 there's a way or if it works at all to get at, you know, what folks are wanting to see, if it, if there's any way to to make that connection between the the rental bucket and and the RISE bucket along the lines of what Councilmember Alter was asking about. Again, I don't know if that answers the questions that people have. So I guess what I'm asking is, is is there a potential for the staff to do a bit more work? Because I think we are very, very close. And from my perspective, I would agree with what others have said, that the first two buckets look fine and that the tweaks, or not tweaks, that's not the right term, the adjustments that people are interested in or in more in the third bucket. So.
Councilmember Mayor Pro-Tam and then Councilmember Kassar.
I agree with Councilwoman Kitchen in that I think overall we're headed in the right direction. But I, if we were to do a fist-to-five on on whether we're happy with the allocation of individual versus business, I would definitely be a one at this point because I think there needs to be some kind of shift in allocation for immediate and individual needs in in the framework.
Yes, I, yeah. I am, I'm fine with staff coming up potentially with options or ideas for us, but I don't want the staff to go around trying to chase or guess what it is we think when we have an efficient, and I'm not suggesting, Councilmember Kitchen, that that's what you're saying. I just, I don't want to put the staff in a, in a position where you're having to re-watch this tape and guess what would make sense for us. You could have some suggestions or ideas based on the conversation. We have a pretty simple method of addressing it through just voting, and it's hard and it's public, but I don't think we have to drag it out. I know that there might be some concern that we take up tons of our day next Thursday, but I think we're close enough that it's just some summary vote to just say, hey, let's move 3 million from here to here, pass or fail, 4 million from here to here, pass or fail. I just don't think that it's that complicated. But if the staff has ideas, I'm interested in it, but I don't know how interested I I am in a new staff proposal, because then we might be torn between editing both of those.
Is the question of, is the question presented is, do we want to have more direct relief provided? And if we do, from where does it come? Is that the question?
That's the remaining question, that's right.
And how much?
And how much? Councilmember Harper-Madison, did you raise your hand? You're just confirming.
I did, but Councilmember Alter already asked my question.
Okay. So maybe that's the thing, I mean, having isolated now down to that question, maybe that's the thing for people to think about over the course of the next week. And and make this part of the the COVID question, the discussion that we have next week. Because it's response to that. I mean, if that's the question, then maybe that's what we ought to be focusing on. Jimmy.
There.
I'll come around, everybody. Jimmy.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm I'm still where I was when we started the conversation today, and I think we've all had some really good conversation. But it does need to be, we need to be clear about what we want. And because just saying more is not, it's just not sufficient, right? Because if we do some napkin math, there's 50 to 60 million for individual assistance, and then there's 25 for business and another seven for nonprofit, and maybe those numbers are a little bigger. And like I said before, I'm willing to to shift those numbers around, but are we saying that the individual assistance number needs to be 70? In which case, we have to go out, we need to look at the math and find a reallocation of 12 million. And I'm making the numbers off the top of my head here, but, you know, we we kind of need to set a target, one of those numbers we need to know. And then staff can kind of move things around to to meet that number. But if we don't give them any, it's like an algebra problem with too many variables. We don't give them any number, they can't solve for X. I I'm fine with the way they laid it out. I'm fine with taking the individual assistance programs from 57 to 65. Or I'm fine with taking the small business assistance from, you know, 24 to 18. But we got, we got at least solve, we need to at least answer one variable so staff can come up with a reallocation.
Yes, our Tova.
I guess, Mary, you had said if that's the question before us, I want to be clear about what that question is. I mean, to me, it is not as simple as adjusting, adjusting the balance between support for businesses and support for individuals. You know, as I look through this list, I certainly see technical assistance. I mean, that's pretty clearly support for businesses. We provide some of that already through our city programs. Perhaps that's a million dollars that we could reallocate somewhere else. But when we're talking about providing grants to businesses to help them pay their rent, if that allows them to stay open at the end of the day, that's also support for the individuals who work there. And so it's, you know, I I want to be careful about how we have this conversation because in supporting the businesses and helping them stay open and helping them meet their payroll, you know, there are individuals who are are going to be able to continue to be employed, I hope. And so, you know, as we, if if that is, if we're going to try to get to a more granular level of reallocation, then I want to have a much more in-depth conversation about the different line items and really make sure that we're removing, removing and reallocating funding that makes sense. So again, to me, one that jumps out is technical assistance. Childcare service provider assistance, I'd have to really think about. I mean, that's support for businesses, absolutely. But if people can't, if people don't have reliable childcare, they can't go back to work. So, you know, that that again impacts individual, that is individual assistance being provided through some of our core business infrastructure that we absolutely need. So, anyway, that's my thoughts on that. I did have one thing I wanted to mention about the rent program that I'd forgotten before, and that is, Councilmember Alter, I think you, you hit on a very important point. As, as Director Truelove talked about, there were some administratively intense elements of of the program in its first phase, and it seems to me there might be a very good match between the point that Mayor Pro-Tam Garza raised and then the the suggestion you made and what the staff learned through the first administration of it, which is that it may be, it may be better for all kinds of reasons, administrative, as well as really getting deep into the community through trusted organizations to to allocate that rental assist, some of that rental assistance money to some of the same organizations that helped with the RISE funding. So, thank you. If we're, are we thinking about, talking about this as well on Tuesday? Is that the the thought? I I would suggest that we have a conversation about it on Tuesday. I'm not, I'm not sure. I mean, I, I'm not sure I see it as the best use of our time to try to have votes about the more granular issues at that point. I prefer having another work session first. And maybe having a little bit more time to reflect on it between next week and and the next council meeting.
But I think that it does give us some focus. Again, if the issue in front of us is, do we want to give more direct assistance? Which I think is what I've heard. And and, yes, I wasn't suggesting by identifying the issue of where that would come from or what that would be or how much. It was just if what people are saying they're not seeing in this that they want to see is more direct assistance, then the then the question would be then, okay? And if there was support for that, where would it come from and how much? Which then gives rise to to all the other questions. But at least it gives a framework to have that conversation. It's a choice. So the suggestion's been made that we think about that question and we take a look at the line items, ask staff questions about the line items if you have them. And then as part of the COVID conversation at the work session, we'll, we'll, we'll see if people have suggestions or if there's an idea that 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 looks like it has a consensus. Even though we can't vote on Tuesday, we can certainly discuss it. Paige.
I'm on board with where this conversation's heading and happy to talk about it more on Tuesday. My my biggest thing is that we do need more direct assistance and definitely rent, whether it's from the rent fund or to the RISE fund. I think whichever is kind of more flexible would be helpful because there are people who also need, you know, to pay for prescriptions because our uninsured rate is high. People have lost their jobs and health insurance goes with that. And so I want to make sure that the strains on family budgets can be alleviated in the most flexible way. But definitely agree that we need to see more money allotted to rent assistance. And whether it goes to the landlord or to the individuals, I don't know that I, I'm strongly opposed to one or the other. I do like the flexibility of something that could be used for other parts of family budgets that are being strained right now. So if that's the most appropriate way to get that done, I I would support that type of direction.
Okay, Councilor Poole.
Thanks. I don't think we can vote today anyway, right? Because we were only fixed for for discussion. Yeah. I I'll just reiterate, I like the work that staff has laid out to us today. I've heard the various commentary from from all of you all, and we'll think about it some more. We agree that if we give relief when we, when we hand it out, if we give it to landlords, it helps the tenants, as long as we're making sure that that is the case. And I also agree that if direct money is going to families, then if there's more ability for them to spread it around to their other needs, and we don't know what those needs are. I almost hate to ask if we actually know how many people, what the dollar figure is for the need in the community with regard to rental assistance. I don't know if anybody has put any pencil to paper on that, and maybe that number is something that would so blow our minds that it would just, you know, make us all despair. But it, so, just rhetorically, if anybody has given any thought to that, I think it would help us know what it is, you know, I think in Jimmy's words, what are we solving for? Allison also says, what are we solving for? So what's the difference? And it could be that it's indefinite and and we can't, and incalculable. So, but for the effort, to the extent this iterative process to where we've gotten to today, I think Steph has really done an extremely good job, very admirable work. I appreciate the work. I would be happy to move forward with this document as it is today, recognizing that we can always make additional changes and adjustments as time goes by, which may be, frankly, the best course of action at this point anyway, because we do not know three months from now what will be faced.
Yes, we're sorry. Great.
Given, given that we've narrowed it down to this question, I don't know if there's any reason to not post it for us to just make a decision on Thursday. My, I, I'm concerned, I'd be even fine with passing it with an asterisk that, you know, we can come back and change things when funds aren't expended, but what I don't want to do is delay the staff, have the staff stutter-step about whether or not they should start processing applications, start getting certain programs moving. And we hear every day from people that are, that need some of this help. I, I, I don't know what, I'm having trouble understanding what the reluctance would be to just post, just voting on the framework and 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 voting on an amendment or two to 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 land the question that Councilmember Flanagan has put before us, which is, yeah, the the answer is we're never going to have exactly the right number, but we should just do our best and and pick the recalibration and 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 take a vote. Is there, because if we if we start talking about it on Tuesday and we realize we need to vote, then we can't post for Thursday.
Yes, our kitchen.
I'm fine with with voting on Thursday. Voting at the, the, on the spending framework, and then if there's an adjustment that needs to be made, if people want to bring that forward, I'm I'm fine with doing that. I I think that the, I think it's really important that we, that we give whatever direction we're going to do to staff, so that they're not wondering whether they should be proceeding with, you know, with the program. So I, I share the sentiment that Councilmember Kassar just just raised.
Yes, our Tova.
So it, as you rephrased it, Mayor, the question is, direct assistance, I, but I, are we really talking about? I mean, there are various forms of direct assistance throughout this spending framework. There's rental assistance, there's food assistance, there's other kinds of direct assistance. Is the question that's before us really about increasing those existing pools of rental assistance and other other categories? Or are we really talking about more cash assistance? I mean, I just think we need to be very clear about articulating what exactly is the question? Because there are, again, I I think we need to really communicate clearly to the public, there are multiple forms of direct assistance. That has been a primary priority for all of us for several months now. So if we're talking about a general, including a category of general direct assistance that is not specific, or that is cash assistance that could be used for those other things, then let's, then let's name it what it is. Is that the question that we're, that that folks are wanting to vote on next week? Or is it about, or should we, or should we be thinking about how much for rental assistance and those other additional categories?
Mayor Pro-Tam.
Yes, I could, I was thinking more along, you know, RISE. I think we've, I think RISE has now been split up into all these different buckets. So I would say RISE itself does not anymore, need anymore, I mean, obviously would love more rental assistance. But if we're trying to, there's already a whole nother, I know you hate it, bucket, but there's a whole nother rental bucket. And so it would be just, yes, that, you know, the debit cards that we were giving people for, as Councilmember Ellis pointed out, you know, prescriptions, or now they're, they've lost their insurance, so they, so their copay went from $10 a month to $400 a month. Like, you know, there's all these, so that's what, in my thought, what individual assistance was. And then if I could just quickly speak to the, you know, I feel like, I hate this, you know, that we have to pick one and not the other, but I, not purely understanding, you know, I guess, rental assistance for businesses. I, I, I agree that, you know, to some effect, to some respect, it allows them to stay in business, which allows people to still have jobs, but with capacity issues. For example, if I am a restaurant and I'm going to get rental assistance as the business, I get my rent covered, right? But I, 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 I'm still not clear, and maybe this is true, maybe you're required to still, as a, as a part of that, you're still required to employ the exact same 20 servers that you had before. My assumption is, I don't, I don't think you are. And then I also think we need to consider, when I used to wait tables, and I don't think it's changed, you only got two, two 13 an hour. And so, so if you're, if you're working in a restaurant, sure, you're under the, under... you're, you're still getting your two 13, but you're not getting anywhere near the tips you were getting because of the capacity limits on that establishment. So even though the business might be okay now because we've covered the rent, and, and technically they're still providing the job at two 13, or whatever, that, that, that person is not being able to bring the same amount home and cover the same needs that they had. So I just wanted to make that point.
I could be wrong, Councilor Tovio, but that's what I had heard, from hearing people talk, that it was a direct payment to people, that they would have the discretion to be able to decide where it went. But I could be wrong. That's what I, that's what I gathered from what people were saying.
Then I think that's a pretty, I think that's a pretty quick conversation, and not, and I, my guess is that there'll be a lot of support for creating a category like that. I would ask too, that, that we, I mean, I think one of the things I'll need to do between now and then is really understand the different pools of rental assistance that are within this, and, and to whom they're applicable, because, you know, that's certainly something that we've got demonstrable need, just from the rent program. And so getting a handle on that is, is important, I think, because that may be another area, if we are going to take, you know, votes about specific assistance, and where it is, that might, that seems to me another category that needs additional funding.
Councilor Sarr.
And, and, Councilmember Tovio, I think you and the Mayor Protem said the same thing, and I'm at the same place, I think. Adding more direct financial flexible assistance, I think, is priority one. But if there were enough, that some more also went to rental assistance, I, for me, it's a general tendency towards those two categories, just getting a little bit, just getting some more. And so I'd be fine with either just one, or with both of those, getting some growth without, without, you know, moving around our public health priorities.
Yes, Allison.
So, was my understanding that, within the proposal for some of the small business, that there was potentially funding for landlords? I think there's the rental assistance that was grants to la, grants to landlords, but some of those landlords are businesses. And I'm just wondering if there's a creative way to really be supportive of, of the small landlord and more rental assistance, and do, and be able to get it out into the community. And I, and I'm not sure that I have that information, you know, today to think about it. But, but I think we've, we've done some of our best work when we are, someone behind me. So, some of, some of our best work when we've hit multiple goals. So, you know, the work that Councilmember Tovo did with respect to the IFC Food, and, and, and meeting the needs of the businesses. And, and I'm just wondering if, for some of that, there's a solution here with a little more thought. And I, I believe Ms. Truelove said she was maybe meeting with some of the landlord representatives tomorrow, but maybe there's a way to, to do both things with the same money, slightly more creatively than we, than we have. Because I think that, that might be a way to get more of the rental assistance in there, and address some of the business needs, at the same time.
I think part of the conversation that, that, that was ongoing with the Apartment Association, and with AWAR, with respect to landlords, was trying to figure out, applying the same test that we had given to people, who are the people that were most hurt by this, and least able to sustain that injury? To think about landlords the same way. Who are the landlords that are most hurt, and least able to sustain the injury? People that are now hurting, maybe, you know, it's a retired person who has two rent homes, and now is not getting any income, and the like. And the question we asked was, is there a way maybe for that landlord, who might have a tenant who otherwise qualifies, but is not applying for it, for the landlord to be able to apply on behalf of the tenant? And that kind of thing. And I, we had suggested to both the landlord groups, that they think about how you could create that filter, to make sure that we're helping the people, again, most hurting, most unable to sustain the injury. I think, I agree with you. I mean, I, I would love to see where those intersections are, and, and where that help could, because that's rental assistance, but it's also helping people that are, right now, maybe not covered by what it is we're doing.
I, I do think that it is helpful to understand the order of magnitude that we're talking about, given what's already in the framework. Because it, there seem like there, there are very few of these category buckets where we could take the funding from. It looks like we could take it from the small business assistance, you could take it from the creative sector assistance, and otherwise it doesn't seem all that, that flexible, and those buckets are only so, so big. And, you know, otherwise there are, you know, bases of things that we've already passed as council. So, you know, are, are we talking on that, at the order of magnitude of five million? Are we talking 20 million? What are, what are we, what are we trying to address? Because I think we would all like to give more direct financial assistance, but there are trade offs from where that comes, that we have to, to account for, that affect our trajectory over the recovery, depending on where the funding is coming, coming from.
I think those are the questions. Councilmember Kitchen. Yeah. You're muted. That's okay. Can you, you can't unmute?
There we go, there we go. Okay. I just wanted to say that, yeah, I think that's a fundamental question is, how much are we thinking of, and where can we take it from? I, I could see some coming from the creative bucket. That's hard for me to say, because I've been a champion for the creatives for a long time, and they're underfunded. But I'm, I'm happy to look at that as, as one place. I certainly wouldn't want to wipe it out. But perhaps that would be one place. The small businesses might be one place. There might be other places too. I agree with Councilmember Tovo, that the technical assistance is something, from my perspective, that is, is a good thing to have, but it doesn't, it's not an immediate need. So that would be another place that would work for me. So, but these are all order of magnitude things, you know, there's not a huge amount of dollars that can be taken from any of those buckets. I would ask the city manager to, to, I, I know you've probably already done this, but, you know, we had a discussion earlier about the extent to which there was some local, some existing budget dollars that were repurposed. So I'm sure you guys have already scrubbed for that, but if there were any, that would be something to ask.
Was there, was there an issue with respect to use of the CARES funding for direct assistance payments? Is that allowed?
I think Bree was closest to that. Bree, are you still on the phone?
I mean, if it's COVID related?
You're muted if you are.
I'm sorry, was there a question for me?
Sorry. Yeah, I was wondering, is there any, is there an issue with respect to using CARES funding for direct payment to people that are hurt by, by COVID?
The, the direct payment has to, as we've said again and again, be related to COVID. So we need them to show and demonstrate that they are, they lost their job, they can't go to their job, they have, they have to stay home. So we all know that, right? But also, we don't believe there's not, that we can just give out cash without tying it to what that aid is. So, yes, we can provide aid for rental assistance, food, you know, medicines, but we need to have the reason associated with it, not just, here's $250 for everybody.
I will also clarify, we're waiting, you know, we don't have, we're working off the guidance we have. Sorry.
I have a question about that, that, Mayor, can I?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
So I just, not to, not to say you're wrong, Bree, but just to be clear, so it was okay for the federal government, and this is more their hypocrisy than, than anything you've said. It was okay for them to send $1,200 checks for whatever they needed, even to people that didn't even need it, not having to prove whether they needed or not. But we can't use CARES funding to do that exact same thing? That's what, y'all believe the interpretation is?
I believe that that's how they will hold it against us, yes.
That the 12 covered the anything need?
Well, the 1,200 was seen as a tax rebate. Okay, so let me start there. They're going to, they're going to say, well, that was offering, that was giving back money you already put in. That was giving back a tax rebate. We can't afford a tax rebate, that ability. So they're going to argue with, with a philosophical similarity, but I understand the point you're making, absolutely. And we're, we're working with guidance, which means that the Treasury Department has an unlimited amount of wiggle room, I should say, I have, there's a better term, of ability, what they decide guidance means of the other day.
Okay, so I think, and I think public, I think our public health was able to provide, like, give direction to its providers, you know, something along the lines where people were asked, is this, is this because of COVID, and is this for rental, food, diapers, utility? And if the answer to that is yes, then, then, then it's allowed. Is that right?
I think the guidance I've seen help provide is very helpful in asking, remember, Treasury is going to say that, they were responsible for the nonprofits that we, we asked to administer these funds. What I saw that we, as the guidelines about that, that does provide that nexus, and then that relation to what the need is.
Okay, so it's, it's just before five. I think it probably makes sense to have a resolution that would tee this up, so that we can take a vote on Thursday and give the direction. We can certainly talk about it on Tuesday. And, you know, about whether, to what extent we want to, to get into the document. But at least that would, that would maintain that available to us on Thursday. It's also a relatively short agenda so far. I don't know what else we'll see here tomorrow. But it might be a good agenda to, to do that on. Okay?
I would, just Mayor, for clarification, that would include the level of detail that you see in the spreadsheet, not just the big bucket categories. Is that correct?
Well, I think we wouldn't be deciding that question now. It sounds as if most people are kind of okay with the big buckets and the like. It could be that the only change would be one or two lines, relative to the conversation we're having. But it gives people the ability to take another look at those lines, as Councilmember Tovo was, as Kathy was asking for, to really understand those elements. So it's more just preserving the opportunity. My sense is, is that the will of the council is not going to be to do a wholesale rewriting of this. I think people are generally pleased with it. And I think the question really centers around, is there a tweak to be made with respect to direct cash payments, with whatever limitations are required by law to, you know, be able to use funding? And, and is there more rental assistance? And if so, how much, and, and from where? I think really those are the, the questions being teed up. But I don't know how you tee that up without letting the whole thing be in front of the council, so that they have the ability to be able to, to, to act on it. But I think that's the nature of the conversation that I'm hearing. Councilmember Alter.
That would really just be putting the spending framework on there for us to vote on it, though. I mean, this would not be a resolution from council members. This would be the city manager placing the spending framework on there for us to take a vote and make amendments to that framework, which seems like we've landed on making those changes, just to the economic support section.
I think so. Manager, if you could post that as an item from you, as opposed to coming from council, and it would just be, you know, to confirm that, recognizing that two weeks later, we could change it, if suddenly there's something else that happens. But it gives, it worked for everybody to be working off of.
So we may try to find some language that would indicate that too. Again, these are estimates that we're moving within this general spending framework, and that's what we're calling this a framework. But this is the direction that council is really authorizing the, the city manager to, to use these funds for.
I think so. If you make that part of the agenda posting tomorrow. Uh, Councilmember Atteria.
Yeah, Mayor, I, and I agree with you. I think we should be flexible, as long as we have the ability to come back, you know, and have the flexibility, seeing if there's something in one, one area that's really affecting and really need attention, that we could allocate some resources to that area. Because we don't know exactly what's going to happen down in the future. So I really would appreciate if we have the flexibility to be able to move money around in the future, if there's something, a problem, or there's something that, you know, a big cluster somewhere, so we can address those kind of issues.
Manager, if you would pull this, put it on the agenda, and also pull it for Tuesday's conversation at the work session, if the clerk could do that as well. Councilor Alter, Allison.
I just wanted to ask if we could get some additional information on the financial and other direct support bucket, so 15.5, so 7.6 million from RISE, but that balance, can we understand? I know there was in the prior version, a, a, a public health oriented one, but that, I don't know where that number came from, and what that allows us to do, or if that's still what we're anticipating that would be used for, because it's also possible that that, I, I just don't know what, I'd like to know more about what that amount was thought for, where that, where that came from, because it seems relatively high relative to other assistance that we provided individuals. So I'd just like a little bit more on how many people, and, and what we're, we're anticipating with that. Thank you.
I don't know if, I'm looking to see if Stephanie's still on the line. If she is, I would let her speak to this. Otherwise, I can speak more generally to it.
Was a que, I might be, because of, I'm talking about, was the question of why 6.7.6 was allocated?
There was.
The bucket has a balance, the bucket has a balance above and beyond the 7.6 million that was already in RISE. In the previous iteration, that was going to help people who tested positive and quarantined. And it kind of says that, that the bucket really says vulnerable populations too. And so I wanted to understand more about what they thought the need was for the particular public health focused element, and how many people that was anticipated to help, because there may already be some money in that bucket. I wanted to understand that.
We can provide the more detailed question in writing about how many people would it would serve, but there was an additional $7.9 million, which in the previous iteration was referred to as the Public Health Fund. And the idea for that fund was to provide assistance to individuals who perhaps had shown symptoms, and tested for the disease, and had to choose between going into work to earn their income, or being able to stay at home. So the Public Health Fund would be targeted more at providing assistance to people to stay home, when that was the right thing to do, and not have to make that choice between having an income, or having to go to work while you're awaiting your test results, and perhaps infecting other people. So it was assistance to individuals, but just targeted in a different way.
Thank you. And, and I appreciate that, that's a need. I was just, in this iteration, it doesn't say that that's all programmed or not. And so I was, I was trying to understand that piece, and, and some of what we're talking about. So I'd welcome clarity.
Okay. Anything else before we stop for today? All righty then. Everybody be safe. It is 4:58, and this meeting is, work session is, is adjourned. Be safe. Be safe.